Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay, good afternoon to everybody. We're going to call the meeting to order. Get in.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So just for the record, this meeting is being recorded. And it is being conducted through the governor's order in response to the COVID-19. Let's see, council members, please remember to prevent crosstalk, the clicking of pens and shuffling of paper, which I know I have to be careful as well. And for public comment, we have members on Zoom, so this is a hybrid meeting. And as well as people in attendance, members of the public wishing to make a comment that are in person, you simply wait to be addressed by the mayor. Members of the public on Zoom, please raise your hand on your application or device, or if you're calling on your phone, simply by dialing *9 during the public comment period, and we will call you by name or phone number. Once the comments have been heard, the public comment period will be closed. And as a reminder to everyone, anyone using abusive, vulgar, offensive, threatening, or harassing language, personal attacks of any kind, or offensive terms that target specific individuals or groups, will be muted and removed from the meeting. Thank you.
Very well, thank you. And let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Councilmember Bagby.
Present.
Councilmember Paula.
Here.
Councilmember Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lance.
Here.
And Mayor Cruz.
Here. Any conflict of interest declaration today by anyone? Okay, seeing none, we move on. Agenda review, changes and/or deletions.
Madam Mayor, staff does not propose any additions or deletions or changes to the agenda?
Um, could you repeat, please?
Sure. Madam Mayor, staff does not propose any changes or deletions to the agenda tonight?
Okay, thank you. And we'll go to public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the city council on any item that listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any items on the council agenda during that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Any public comments?
And still no hands are currently raised, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we'll go ahead with the presentation by Bayren. Water Upgrade Save Program.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I'm really delighted to introduce Chris Cohn. Chris Cohn comes from the Regional Climate Protection Authority, which is a partner agency with the Sonoma County Transportation Authority. Mrs. Cohn previously provided a presentation in May to the Police Administration Finance Sec Committee, where she provided an overview and presentation on what's referred to as the Bayren Water Upgrade Save Program, which was formerly known as the Water Bill Savings Program. This program actually had its genesis right here in Sonoma County back in 2012. The town of Windsor initiated a pilot program of on-bill financing of water efficiency improvements. Subsequent to that, the program was also piloted in the city of Hayward. Since that time, Bayren has taken the initiative to establish a program across the regional Bay Area to enable all the cities to offer this program, subject to council approval. This program offers a number of benefits for customers, and I just want to emphasize, it's really an opt-in program if customers are interested in utilizing on-bill financing to pay for water efficiency improvements. But with that said, we'd like to introduce Chris Cohn. Chris Cohn is going to walk you through an overview of the Pay As You Save Program. And what we are asking Bayren in the agenda tonight, it's on consent, is for approval of a master agreement, which would then authorize staff to work with Chris and her team to actually implement a program, offer the program here in Cloverdale. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Ms. Cohn.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly, before I start, would you like me to share the presentation, or were you going to show the slides?
Yes, if you can, Chris.
Okay, just one moment. And one more slideshow. Don't we love technology? And sorry, one more button, and there we go. So, good evening, councilmembers. Madam Mayor, it's a pleasure to be with you. I am the program manager for Water Upgrade Save, which is brought to you by the Bay Area Regional Energy Network and the Sonoma County Regional Climate Protection Authority is the Sonoma County representative to Bayren and also the administrator for Water Upgrade So, out is top of in these days, and according to the state, Sonoma County is in the extraordinary drought category right now. And last month, we experienced our driest July in 127 years. So this is timely to bring you the Water Upgrade Save Program. The program provides a new way to save water by making the following offer: that municipal water utility customers can install eligible water and energy efficiency upgrades with little-to-no upfront cost, using a utility-approved on-bill charge that is significantly lower than the estimated savings. This means participants pay as they save, using a portion of their savings to pay for the project over time with an on-bill charge. This is possible because of the 80% rule. The monthly on-bill charge can be no more than 80% of the estimated savings, and the repayment period no longer than 80% of the upgrades useful life. Customer assurances make it easy for customers to participate and include the little-to-no upfront payment, no new debt, and no credit check. Participants pay only while they are a utility customer at the project location, and a guarantee that failed measures are repaired or the payment obligation ends. The program serves single-family and multifamily customers with indoor and outdoor upgrades. The estimated savings on which the on-bill charge is based include water, sewer, and water heating savings. The on-bill charge is repaid over 10 years with an equal interest payment of 5%. This shows a or-and-after bill total using Cloverdale's current and proposed residential water use data from the draft water and sewer rate study published in April. As shown, the current rate produces a $15.89 savings per month average. The proposed rate produces $12.21 savings per month. The difference there is related to the fact that the sewer charge is fixed and has also increased. Under the proposed rate scenario of $12.21, up to $9.77 could be used for the on-charge, that's 80% of the total savings, and then the remaining $2.44 would be an immediate reduction in the utility bill. Water Upgrade Save is a tariffed, oops, my slide moving, there we go. Water Upgrade Save is a tariffed on-bill program, so it is not a consumer loan nor a rebate. It is administered by Bayren and its partner agency, the Association of Bay Area Governments. The on-bill financing mechanism provides capital to facilitate utility investment for the public benefit. It does using the utility rate-setting authority to recover investment in customer-side projects with the on-bill charge. The capital provider, in this case A-BAG, pays for services rendered to install upgrades for participating customers. The utility collects on-bill charge at participating meters to make repayment of the invested capital. The program enables utilities to deliver immediate savings that support customer repayment. The regional program provides low-cost utility investment capital, installs projects through a turnkey service, provides streamlined customer services, and serves property owners as well as renters. Participating renters do need to obtain their landlord's approval to enroll. With utility guidance, the program issues a series of mailings to the water customers with an invitation to schedule a free onsite assessment. The program also provides content for the city website, newsletters, social media, and utility bill inserts, as well as marketing materials for events and yard signs for participating customers. The program does not require additional utility staff or budget to operate. So customer enrollment is a pretty easy process. The customer receives the program invitation that I just mentioned and schedules a free onsite assessment. The water specialist inspects the water fixtures, verifies the savings, helps with upgrade selection and contractor scheduling, and facilitates signing of the participation agreement. The program contractor arrives at the appointed time and installs the upgrades. The water specialist then conducts a quality control inspection and tells the utility the project is complete. The utility brings the on, begins the on-bill charge and the repayment to the A-BAG finance service. Customer can say as soon as the upgrades are installed, and if they should move, the next customer at that location assumes the ongoing savings and the remaining on-bill Participating customer benefits include the immediate bill savings, the ability to lower household costs. In our three pilots, water bills were reduced by 20% in our single-family customers and 30% in our multifamily customers. The little-to-no upfront cost, no debt, no credit check is a feature for customers. The new upgrades also meet code, and, again, the guarantee that any failed measure is repaired or the payment obligation ends. In addition, I want to mention that we have a bilingual water specialist and bilingual customer marketing materials, including the customer letter, brochures, and flyers. And in September, Bayren will launch its new website, on which we are featured, and that will provide content in a range of languages, including Spanish. So utility enrollment is a four-step process. First, the new partner utility signs a master agreement with A-BAG and adopts a fee schedule that authorizes the on-bill charge. Then the utility decides which customers it would like to target. The utility can also set a water use reduction goal that will help it balance its conservation and revenue needs. In each, in addition, each utility has the option to participate in project inspection or customer outreach. As each utility project is complete, the partner utility assigns the on-bill charge to the meter location, collects the customer payments, and repays A-BAG. The utility may also add an up to 2% fee to each project to cover these administrative tasks. And finally, the partner utility works with the program to guide marketing and to the target customers with coordinated messaging and branding. Tonight, the city staff have asked the council to consider author of execution of the master agreement, which establishes the program partnership between the city of Cloverdale and A-BAG, as well as to adopt a rate and fee schedule, which activates the utility's authority to apply the on-bill charge. The benefits to the utility include having a new tool to help meet state annual drought targets with minimal budget and staff impact, and the use of the program turnkey services, as well as the optional utility fee. It is also a tool to help control conservation impacts by setting that water use reduction goal. And finally, this program works well with other established programs, can be with other rates, and in some cases, it can replace existing rebates, and that rebate money can be reassigned to other conservation priorities. And finally, I would like to announce that we have launched our first program with the city of Sebastopol on May 24. The city was particularly interested in joining Water Upgrade Save to mitigate recent water and sewer rate increases that they had. Sebastopol Mayor, Vice Mayor Sarah Gurney put it this way, "We want to give local citizens an affordable tool to lower their water and energy use." As you can see, in just the last three and a half months, Sebastopol has installed 23 single-family projects that will produce an annual water use reduction of over 70,000 I am happy to answer questions that the council may have. There were a few questions provided to me ahead of this meeting, and I would like to address those right now, if I could squeeze those in. One of the questions was, can the on-bill charge be paid off early? And no. And the reason for this is that we want to ensure that both the current and a possible successor customer are not asked to pay more than they are saving at any given time. The second question is, is any aspect of the program free? Yes, we do provide the free onsite water assessment, where we can evaluate the program and inform the customer of their opportunities. And then another was, how would the program work if the city adopted a toilet rebate? And as I mentioned, the program can be combined with rebates. A toilet rebate would simply bring down the cost of the project and make it more affordable for the customer. And then finally, a question regarding mobile home parks. Mobile home parks are a complex situation. They are a hybrid of ownership and utility models. So we would address this on a case-by-case basis to understand where we could offer this program to mobile home parks. So that concludes my remarks, and I'm happy to take questions.
Thanks so much for the presentation. I have a question, I think it's Slide 7, the customer journey. Could you kind of walk us through maybe like who some of the players are? And I guess my question would be, like, who would typically be the water specialist? I think we probably know the program contractor would be a licensed contractor. And then under program operator, can you just kind of tell us which entities or which kind of people would handle those jobs?
I have to say, I'm having a very hard time hearing the comments. Is there a microphone?
Can you hear me if I hold the mic up here?
There was a question about a water specialist program operator, but I didn't catch all the details.
I think it's unmuted. On my laptop? Ah, on the Zoom call? I'm on the Zoom call.
No, it's just the mic.
It's just the mic, yeah. Can you hear me, Chris?
Better, yes.
Okay. So I wanted to go to Slide 7 and customer journey, starting kind of with water specialist, and then to program contractor, and then program operator, kind of who and what entities would cover those tasks.
Okay, this slide? Are you, is this the slide you're referring to?
Yes.
Right.
So we have a program operator is a company called Utility. They run tariffed on-bill programs back east for electric utilities, and the water specialist is their local employee. And so Utility is in charge of the entire customer journey. They also hire the program contractor, who has to meet a number of requirements in order to participate in the program. Currently, we have a very experienced program contractor, who in fact worked with us in Windsor and on the city of Hayward tariffed on-bill pilots in the past.
Okay, yeah, that explains that. Thanks so much.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, Chris, thank you for that presentation, very informative, and a very good program. My question is around the successor customer. If a person sells their home, they do a significant amount of improvements, though they're saving water, but when, I presume there'd have to be a disclosure to the new buyer? And how would that all work? If, would that maybe make it more difficult to sell the residence based on that? How does that work?
Yes, I'd be glad to explain that.
So when a project is approved and reported to the utility to begin the on-bill charge, we file a notice of efficiency charge with the county recorder's office for that property that informs the property owner, as well as any future buyer, that the property is in the Water Upgrade Save program. In addition, when a water customer who's in the program closes their account because they've sold their home, and the new customer enrolls at that meter location, then the program sends them a letter informing them that their property is in the program, and what the program is, and the benefits that they are receiving, and an explanation for the on-bill charge on their bill. So there's two levels to ensuring that a person taking over a property that's in the program receives notice.
Just a follow-up question, then. If the seller at that time wanted to just pay it off so they wouldn't have that, to go through that process with a potential buyer, would that be possible?
No.
This program is based on the principle of the savings covering the cost of the investment. And paying off early disrupts that value proposition. So we do not allow an, you know, an early payoff of the on-bill charge. But when a successor customer, you know, enrolls in a water account with the utility, they will receive the savings that those upgrades are continually producing, which will exceed the on-bill charge, so that they are in that cash positive position.
Again, thank you for coming this evening and giving us a very nice presentation. I have two questions. One is to piggyback on Councilmember Paulus, I'll come back to that in one minute. But on Slide number three, outdoor upgrades for fall 2021, you mentioned turf removal. And I just need some clarification on that. Are we talking about killing the turf as it sits on the property, or are we talking about removing it and bringing it to a landfill?
So, I'm sorry, still having a bit of trouble hearing, but what I understand is a question about the outdoor upgrades and how the turf removal is done?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
In the past, removal of the turf is not allowed. It had to be killed these places.
Because they don't have the landfill.
Yes, I'm sorry, the terminology on the slide is a bit confusing, but the protocol is not to remove it, but to cover it, mulch it, and, you know, use it as a basis for the drought-tolerant landscape. So it's integrated into the new landscape, rather than removed to, you know, a landfill or anything.
And then my second question is to piggyback on Councilmember Paulus' question pertaining to succession of ownership. And I understand that, you know, in some instances, if a home sells and there is a solar lien on the property, some financial institutions would make that be paid off prior to lending. So I'm more concerned about what the financial institutions think about having a lien on the property that might supersede their lien. So I would just like to know, has it been tested yet? I would imagine not.
Has this pro, tested this model? Is that the question? I'm still having a little hard, sometimes the audio drops down and I'm not quite capturing everything, but the on-bill, tariffed on-bill program model has been in operation for the past 20 years in 11 different utilities around the nation. And in California, the three utilities are water utilities, who were part of our pilot program from 2012 to 2019. So we have run pilots on this program that have been successful. Does that address your question?
Not really, but I'm going to hold my question. I'm sure this will be coming back to us at some point after staff gets to look at it. But I'm concerned about a lender that may have a problem extending funds on a property where they're not in first place on the deed. So...
This is part of the utility service, so this is not a consumer loan or a mortgage type of situation on the property.
But you have a lien, you have a lien on the property, do you not?
We filed that notice of efficiency charge, which is to inform the home buyer that the property is in this water conservation program.
Okay.
But it does not take sphere, mortgage, or other financial aspects of that property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation, very informative. I still have some questions. I would like to hear more about how this is going to impact multifamily and commercial industrial. industrial properties. I do understand that you're going to disclose the commercial in the fall. However, I would like to know how that's going to be different from single family.
So we are, have been developing a commercial program for small to medium businesses. And some of the best opportunities are in the food service sector, as well as some office building situations. So we are in process of refining where best opportunities are, and will have that determination in a few months. And my goal is to be able to offer that commercial service before the end of the year.
Okay, because I definitely would like to see what are the guidelines for the commercial upgrades, and how we can, you know, encourage our businesses to go ahead and also sign up for this program. Thank you. You were saying something about the commercial program? Chris?
I'm sorry, I was just, are you speaking to me?
Yes.
Okay. What I was saying is that we have narrowed down where the good opportunities for water conservation in small, medium business are. And that in the next couple of months, we will define those as a specific offer to small, medium businesses and be able to roll that out. My goal is by mid to late fall.
Okay. Now, you also, thank you. You also mentioned that renters would need to talk to their landlords. How much assistance would you provide renters to be able to reach out to the landlords?
That is a very good question. At present, I don't have a specific plan for that, but you're bringing an issue to my attention that we can definitely look at how we could provide some extra assistance if there is a barrier to communication there. The, you know, the renter would most likely know who the landlord is, and if there's a way the program could assist them, if they're having trouble in that communication, we could look at how to support that.
Well, it's not only communication. There are very many absent owners who have management companies. So there are different ramifications to the renter and the landlord situation. And perhaps it's something that needs to be taken into account.
I appreciate you bringing that up. That's something I would like to have a proactive solution for. And I would appreciate if there are more details or a specific instance or two in which that barrier has occurred. That would be useful information to me to be able to respond with a detailed solution.
Okay, I think that we will be able to provide that to you.
Okay, great.
After, you know, at a later time. But it's something definitely to be taken into account. Then, the other thing is that on the estimated water customer savings graph, that is what, page four?
Yes.
What is the percentage that goes towards Bayren? Because I see natural gas, wastewater, water, but I don't see what percentage of this goes towards the upgrades.
Okay, so this chart is showing the total savings that the upgrades would produce. It does not include the on bill charge. But in, if we look at the proposed rate bar, that's the fourth bar there in the, or fourth column in the chart, that produces a $12.21 savings over the property with no upgrades. And so the way that the on bill charge is calculated is we take no more than 80% of that savings. So out of $12.21, $9.77 would be available to pay the on bill charge. And then the balance of the savings of $2.44 would actually be reflected in the utility bill. In other words, the bill will go down a bit in the beginning. Once the project cost is paid off, then the customer receives the full savings that the upgrades are producing, or a $12 reduction in their water bill as an example.
Okay. It's a little complicated for the everyday customer, I think. But hopefully with the customer outreach and your marketing campaign, that would be somewhat clarified.
Oh, yes. If I may, I would like to mention that at the, when the water specialist visits the customer home, and they verify the savings and the upgrades are selected, they produce an assessment summary report for the customer. And it shows all the, it shows how many, how much savings will be produced by the upgrades. It shows what the on bill charge will be, what the immediate savings on the water bill will be. So the customer receives a detailed report of their opportunity that they have, so that they're fully informed if they decide to proceed.
Okay, thank you. Then I have one more question. It says that you will follow up with failing upgrade systems. How long will people have to be able to reach out regarding any kind of failing upgrade? Is it for the first five years, or is it until it's paid? How does it go?
I didn't quite catch the full question. Could you repeat it, please?
Okay, so if any upgrade fails, how long does the customer have to request revision of that upgrade or repair of that upgrade that has failed?
There is no limit on the time. There is a condition over the why the major failed. So if the major fails because there's a product defect, or a, you know, something that has to do with the upgrade itself, then it's repaired. But if the customer or someone in their household inadvertently or intentionally damages the upgrade fixture, then the program can't cover that. But we will cover any kind of product defect that may lead to that upgrade not producing the savings that it should.
Okay, thank you. And can we open to the public now to see if there are any hands?
No, hands are currently raised on Zoom, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Blackbe.
Thanks, Chris, for a great presentation and bringing this from Bayren as a recess for our residents. I would just point out that, yeah, this program, well, it's definitely still being developed. It's based on some very successful pilot projects, one of which, of course, is at the town of Windsor, which our city manager may be able to speak in some detail about. But I'm, you know, as I sit on the RCPA board, and we have been working with Chris on this for some time, this is something that our residents need to have a resource and an option that they need to have, and now more than ever during the drought. I don't know about you, but every time I stop and talk with folks at Plank, or stop and talk with folks about the current water conditions, their concerns are, you know, when are we going to do that toilet program again? And when are we going to do cash for grass? When are we going to do? And I said, and I keep telling them, it's coming, it's coming. And, you know, and then this is it. So the timing really couldn't be better because this isn't a way for our utility customers to do on bill financing, just like they do Skype to do solar and battery in their homes. It's very similar to the program that the city just signed to do solar and other energy upgrades, where you basically pay for the product with the savings that you get on your bill. And I think that the time is here. And I just, I look forward to especially working with Chris at our CPA, because she's so receptive to our input and to our concerns and the needs of our, because I've been working with her for a couple of years now as a board member. I know that our, you know, any concerns or any gaps in the program are going to be taken very seriously and addressed. So I definitely, you know, support moving forward with this as a resource for our ratepayers to do that sheet mulching, do that, those irrigation upgrades, and any other programs that we can also support. I think that water savings is going to have to be a way of life in California, and it should be a way of life in Cloverdale. And this is one tool that we can offer our ratepayers to help them finance those upgrades. So I look forward to supporting this and getting this going in Cloverdale.
Mayor, council.
Just in regards to this item, what you heard tonight is a presentation from Chris Cohen on the program. Included on the consent agenda for item number six is a resolution that would establish the fee schedule, as well as authorize your city manager to sign a master agreement to begin implementing the program. So I just wanted to point that out. If council would like to, you know, discuss in more detail either the resolution or the enabling documents, certainly you can ask the questions now as it's part of the presentation. But if council so desires to discuss it more, you could pull that item and we could, we could discuss it as a regular agenda item. It's really at the council's pleasure in terms of how you'd like to, whether you want to move forward and approve this item tonight under consent. So I just wanted to point that out. At this point, it was really just a presentation by Chris Cohen to give you that overview. Again, we brought it forward because, you know, the extraordinary drought conditions that we find ourselves in, this program does have a lot of success in other jurisdictions. And it would be worthwhile bringing it forward sooner rather than later, because it does provide opportunities for our residential customers to finance water efficiency improvements. And again, it is an opt-in program. There's nothing that says a customer has to by any means. But the master agreement would provide kind of the next step and allow us to move forward with working with Ms. Cohen and the team at our CPA on establishing a program within the city of Cloverdale.
I think Vice Mayor Lance has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Chris, for your great presentation. I have a couple of quick questions, because this program to me seems a little bit confusing and a little bit hard to use, and doesn't quite reap the benefits that I would hope with something like this. First off, I see natural gases on the list, and that's controlled by PG&E. If we don't offer that as part of, as part of our program, is it part of yours as well? And PG&E is on board with this?
Good point. So we include that because when you put in a low flow showerhead, you're reducing your use of hot water. And of course, natural gas is part of the utility bill savings that's accrued there. Yes, the natural gas savings is on the PG&E bill and not on the water bill. But in the household, as an entity, they still receive that natural gas, the reduction in natural gas use. And so that, we include in the estimated savings, because it's a very real budgetary savings to the household.
So then with that, wouldn't your water bill be higher if you're using less hot? You're using more cold? Is that correct on that?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? It's sometimes hard to hear.
I apologize. And it's a little bit difficult, these microphones. If you're using less hot water, you're still going to be using water, so it'll make your water bill go up?
Well, you're actually using less water and less natural gas when you have a high efficiency showerhead, because the amount of water that comes through is reduced. And it's because the water is reduced that you don't have to use as much hot water, which means heater doesn't have to work as hard and extend, you know, use that energy to heat a larger volume of water. So it's by reducing the flow of water that we get the dual savings of less gallons and fewer burns.
So then based off of your chart, a savings over 10 years is approximately $250 to a customer when it's all done?
Well, that $15 is monthly.
Correct. But if you take 80% of that, 20% of that totaled over 10 years is about $250 to $260.
That would be the, I believe if I'm following you, that would be the immediate savings that the customer gets. As soon as the project is paid off, they get the entire savings that are being produced by those upgrades. So the amount of savings will go up four fold when they pay the project off.
If there, if these projects had things installed that were still usable, and that they were replaced on time, and that, because the life expectancy of things, of like toilets, showerheads, faucet aerators, they will fail after that 10 years or have to be replaced. So I'm just looking at, I'm just looking at total savings over 10 years to convolute any type of contract, sale of a home, renter agreements. It just doesn't seem like it's cost effective to me at this point. And I'm looking for direction from you to help me understand how it's going to work to make it worth it for the time and effort that a renter or homeowner has to put into this.
Is there something specific you would like me to provide to demonstrate the cost effectiveness?
No, I see the 260.
Would you like to see a graph of how it works out over the 10 year period? I would like to respond with the appropriate information.
So me as a homeowner, how much time am I going to have to put in of my own personal time to sign up for this program and get everything installed and dealt with and handled correctly? It's going to be hours.
Okay.
And so for my time is worth money to me, and a renter's time is worth money to them. So now I take that $260 and say it takes me two hours. Now I'm down to, you know, 50 bucks an hour of my time. Now I'm down to $160 savings. I'm trying to save more money for people, and we're getting real close to breaking even after 10 years if the product works perfect.
Okay, well, to go back to the, to answer your question about how much time, there's two visits involved in the program. The water specialist comes to verify your fixtures and produce this summary report that tells you what the offer is, and complete the enrollment process. And then the contractor has to come later on and install the upgrades. So there is your personal time at those two points in the process. But I would like to point out that in other types of conservation programs, like rebate programs, the customer has to put in their own time there, too. They have to apply for the rebate. And then when they get it, they have to go out and purchase a product and either install themselves or have someone install. So, you know, the amount of the customer's personal time required to receive the benefit of the program is pretty conservative when compared to traditional rebate type programs.
Okay, thank you, Chris. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Chris. I just.
I just, the part that I'm still struggling with is not being able to pay it off if you choose to. I'm not clearly understanding why you have to wait that 10-year cycle if a person, you know, is in a position, they want to just pay it off and have it go away so they realize the full savings because they're in that position and they want to do that. What would be the downside and why was that decision made where they don't have that opportunity if they choose to?
Well, again, it goes back to kind of the founding principle that we want to make sure the customer is paying off the project costs with their savings and not drawing some other resource in their household to pay that off. Also, it is, it is simpler for the program to treat everyone the same. It requires extra work to pay off early and record that and notify all the stakeholders. So there is a kind of backend cost to staggering how the project cost is paid off. So under the system we have, it's very consistent. It's built on this principle of the savings paying for it. When the successor customer may come into a property, they receive the same condition as the original customer. So that's why we've adopted that approach.
Other questions from council?
Mr. Kelly, I think that it seems like we need more information. So I move to request that we remove this from the consent calendar and we discuss it some more. Is that something that we should do or?
Mayor, if council's not comfortable with taking action on the resolution this evening and that it's included as your consent agenda, when you, when you get to the consent agenda, which is next on the agenda, council could certainly request that the item be pulled and it be continued or that staff bring it back after further analysis is conducted.
Mayor, I do have one hand up if you wish to open public comment again.
Yes, I will, since Chris has given us more explanation. Go ahead.
Hi, Debbie. You can unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone. I would just encourage the council to get more information and other resources here from other resource providers before making a resolution on this matter. I'm with some of the other council members that have said, you know, I'm one of those people that would want to pay it off and receive the immediate savings. That's it.
Thank you.
Any other hands? So we'll close public comments and come back to council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess the stumbling block for me is the succession of ownership. You know, I know when a lender, before they disperse cash to an individual who's buying a home, a lot of times they want to see a clear deed. Then we see no incumbents as a matter at all. And I'm also not comfortable with giving the individual the flexibility of paying the loan off, paying this debt off and getting done with it. So that would be what I'm looking for when it comes back, a little better explanation on how that affects the sale and the succession of ownership.
Councilmember Bagby?
Are we going to pull, are we going to pull this item and discuss it further? I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
All right. So any more questions for Chris? Chris will be in touch with more questions.
Chris, if you're available to stick around, the council's going to take up the consent agenda and it will, it sounds like they're going to take action to pull this item. There may be additional conversation.
I'm happy to follow up on the questions that you've raised, and I can work with Mr. Kelly to provide more details. I'm happy to do that after meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. So now we need to move to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately.
Madam Mayor, I'll move the item and request that we pull item six for separate discussion.
Madam Mayor, a second.
And is that going to be all of the items under six or just the one on the master agreement?
The motion that I heard was approval of the consent calendar with the exception of item number six. So that would be items two, three, four, and five, which includes council amendments, the resolution accepting the Second Street Park approvals. Item four, it's the adoption of a resolution to prove the ad valorem tax rate.
And I want that pulled.
Which one?
The item number four, the ad valorem tax.
So items four and six. Okay, so we need to modify the motion, Melanie.
I agree.
And I modify my second. Thank you.
Okay. So can we come back with one statement, please, David? What was that?
The motion, the amended motion is now to approve the consent calendar, items number two, three, and five, pulling items number four and six for further discussion.
Okay. And then we'll have a roll call.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lamb?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
And Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Now we'll go ahead and, do we discuss four now?
Madam Mayor, that's the council's pleasure if they'd like to take up item four now.
Yes, go ahead and get started.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I requested this item be pulled because I just feel the ad valorem tax that this city has established is a very important financial tool that we have to meet our retirement obligations of our employees. And I just think we need to tote the fact that we have this ad valorem tax. And also, thanks to Susie's hard work, she's, and I've discussed this with her prior to the meeting, she's going to give us a little verbal report. But the good news is the rate is going down for 2022. So when we have a financial situation like this where we're actually lowering the rate, I think we have to discuss it in public so the audience, the public can see exactly what we're doing. So, Susie, if you would.
I'd like to take, I'd like to take all the, you know, credit for this, but the truth is that the county assessor's office has provided certified assessed values. And in Cloverdale, we're expecting to see a 3.9% increase. And that's about $48 million in assessed value that we're expecting to increase. Based on that, the assessment can go down because that's part of your calculation. So it will be reducing from 10.7% per $100 of assessed value down to 9.8 or nine basis points. The reduction, with this reduction, we're still allow for the continued reserve balance of 55%, the same percentage as last year. And it will save the average homeowner approximately $60 a year.
Okay. And unfunded pension liability at this point?
Almost 11 million.
11? Okay. That was on, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to get that out there so the public knew exactly. I think, Jose, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're one of nine cities in California that actually have the ad valorem tax.
That is correct. Not many jurisdictions at all.
Yeah. So we're quite fortunate to have that. Thank you, Susie.
And it's a positive when everything else is going up, right?
Definitely. So with that, I'll move on number four.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
So should we have some, is there any hand for public comments regarding the ad valorem?
No hands on, sir, Mayor.
Okay. So we close it and we'll bring it back for you to call on us.
And Madam Mayor, there's a first by Vice Mayor Lamb and a second by Councilmember Walter on adoption of the resolution.
Will you read the title?
And I'll read it by title only. Adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale Setting the Ad Valorem Tax Rate for Public Employee Retirement System Retirement Benefits for Fiscal Year 2122."
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lamb?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
And Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Thank you.
And so, do you have enough direction on item six, David? Or should we discuss it some more?
Madam Mayor, staff did take notes and will obviously reflect upon the video recording this evening to address the comments that were made about the program, the questions. But certainly if council would like to discuss further, the, you know, specific issues of concern or issues that you'd like for staff to explore, we're here to listen.
Yes, Councilmember Bagby?
Well, I would just remind council that we've actually seen a very similar and effective program to the south of us. They had a very successful pilot project, and this is based on it. We've also had, you know, during the last drought, we had very successful cash-for-grass program and toilet programs. And I think it's important to get this, these kinds of programs into the hands of our rate payers. You know, it is completely voluntary and it doesn't cost anybody anything if you don't participate in it. It doesn't really, and it doesn't add staff time at City Hall. It basically, it adds, it adds an opportunity to finance this over 10 years if that's what you choose to do. You know, some of us are lucky enough to be able to grab our credit cards and if we have a big landscaping project we want to do, we put on our credit card. If we want a new low-flow toilet, go to Home Depot, put it on our credit card. If you want to do that, then you can pay it off when you want to. If you're somebody who is saying, you know what, I've got a lot of other debts I need to pay, I've got a lot of other things I need to invest in, school's starting, I've got, you know, financial obligations, but financing this with the savings that I get on my bill sounds really good to me. And I think that we should just provide that option to folks. And they can, and they will be making a choice with a customer service person right at their home when they're doing the assessment. They'll see, you know, the hardware that is being installed, what the, what the life of the hardware will be, what their expected savings could be. And I just see this as, this is just really, it's just one more resource that we can give people during what is going, what is a dire drought situation that we have right now. A lot of folks have been sitting, you know, just going ahead and watering that turf or, you know, putting off fixing that toilet. And this will give them an opportunity. And the reason I would be very disappointed if we don't pass this tonight is we've got the turf program coming in the fall and we only have one more council meeting after this. And so it would, you know, it would put off implementing that program, you know, farther into the winter when it's going to be, hopefully, we're going to have rain. So I think that we have an obligation to get this into the hands of our rate payers as soon as possible. Again, it costs the city very little. We don't have to add staff time. We have a program and a program manager that's going to do a lot of the legwork, a lot of the assessment. And it's just one more thing that we can offer folks. And again, we're doing something very similar to this with our energy upgrades in the city. We're financing the payments with the savings that we'll see on our energy bills. In this case, where the customer is financing their water saving with their investment in the hardware with the savings that they're going to see on their bills. And so it's not going to be for everybody. And if you don't want to do it, you don't have to do it. You can lean this in with your home equity line of credit or you could finance it with your credit card. That's not always an option for everyone, especially in our community. We're giving them an opportunity to finance an investment in their home with the bill savings. So it's nothing out of pocket for them over 10 years. Again, I just, I think that it's important that we do it sooner rather than later and especially in the drought situation that we see ourselves in today. So I'm hoping that you can kind of, you know, rethink, ask your questions and move forward with this because I think it's a great program. It's been piloted very effectively and time's now.
Go ahead, Councilmember Walter.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Bagby, I agree with you 100%. I think it's a fantastic program. Where I'm getting hung up is that the individual cannot pay it off when they see fit, number one. And number two, that encumbers their property to the extent that I'm not satisfied that it wouldn't cause them a problem when they try and sell their property. So that's where I am at this point. If the individuals had the choice to pay it off whenever they wanted and there was no lien on the property, I'd be all for it. Thank you.
This is something definitely that we'll, we will have the answers because this is what our constituents are asking, too.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm in total agreement with this program, but I have the same concerns that Councilmember Walter just expressed. I don't see any downside in being able to pay it off sooner, even with, if it's, if it's encumbered on the property, but the seller's willing to pay it off before, so it clears the title. But they don't have that ability and I'm not clear why. It seems like that would be an easy thing to implement as an option. I agree with Councilmember Bagby. I mean, this is a tool. It's a good tool. People have the right to opt in if they have no other resources. But that's the part that's bothered me is not able to pay it off. And I wouldn't think that would be a hard thing for, for them to maybe go back to their board and modify so there's that mechanism. But other than that, I'm all for it. I just think that, that's the part that I'm kind of hung up on. 10 years that they're going to be forced to continue this if they choose they don't want to. And that, that's not the part I like. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one more question, and I don't know if David, you could answer, or Susie possibly. When a customer's billed, they pay that bill to Cloverdale. How does the money get to BayRenn or to the contractor?
I know, I know Chris is still out there. Chris, if, if you're able to, I see your hand is up, way, way in on that question because it is, you know, the very specific mechanism by which BayRenn is repaid.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Great. So the question was, how does the contractor get paid?
The question, Chris, was how does BayRenn get repaid by the city?
So BayRenn does not get paid. We have a grant from the CPUC that covers our activities to develop the program and to enroll utilities, but we do not get paid out of the on-bill charge that the customers pay. That is entirely from the capital that ABAG provides to the program to, or the service rendered of installing these upgrades in customer homes. So, and how the contractor gets paid is that when a project is assessed and that assessment report is given to the customer, it includes the scope of work, the time and the labor and materials cost of the contractor, a fee materials cost of the contractor, a fee for the program operator because they are providing all the, you know, beginning to end customer service and support. And then there are three small fees, a 2% capital fee, that's the cost of capital provided by ABAG, a 1% administration fee for the finance service, for the, to move the capital from ABAG through the system, and then the optional utility fee of 2%. So those costs together comprise the total on-bill cost of the project. And it's from that cost and the estimated savings that the project will produce that the on-bill charge is calculated. So, long story short, the contractors paid out of the capital that ABAG provides.
So, Chris, let me get a little more clarifying on this. When our customer pays the bill to Cloverdale, who gets the money to the necessary people? Is it our staff?
Yes.
Okay, so there is a cost to the city that is not being talked about, because that's going to cost our person to do more work.
I'm happy to address that.
Please.
So, just to walk you through it, when a project is complete, we notify your utility, and they set up the on-bill charge on that customer account. Then every month, as the customer pays their entire water bill, they're also paying that on-bill charge, which the utility collects. And every month, the on-bill charges from all the participating customers in Cloverdale are paid back to ABAG for those charges that were collected in that month. And there is a little bit of administrative work there to institute the on-bill charge and then repay ABAG. And that's why we include the optional utility fee, because that, which is paid upfront to the utility every month as new projects are enrolled. And that fee is to recognize and offset that the utility does have some administrative tasks to support the program.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Should we bring you back to the public to see if there are any questions?
Yes, I have one hand raised from Jane Elias.
Go ahead.
Hi, thank you, councilmembers, and thank you for the opportunity again to make a public comment. I was not able to earlier, but I've got to say, the sound is horrible, really hard to hear. So, thank you for your patience on that. Jane Elias Cloverdale, and I just wanted to comment in support of this water savings upgrade program. The Energy and Sustainability Division at County Sonoma was very involved with the pilot that took place with the Windsor Pay As You Save model back in 2012, and it was very successful. And to also just comment on Councilmember Bagby's comment, something I wanted to say earlier, this is, it's just another financing option. Much like the Sonoma County Energy Independence Program is an option, it is absolutely voluntary that a customer, you know, if they want to partake in this type of financing program for their water savings, you know, it's their choice. And much like the Energy Independence Program, we spend that time upfront to make sure when the customer is getting involved in that financing, full disclosure of what is involved in this. And I hear a lot of concern about the 10-year and the fact that people don't have that choice to pay it off. And in this program, the water savings program, you know, that would be a full disclosure upfront that, you know, when they're signing those documents, they're made very aware that this is something that they are going to be setting into for that term of 10 years. And I think with that disclosure and full education, if that's something they choose to decide, and this is really what's going to work best for them, for their financial means, why not? Like I said, it's voluntary. So, it's, again, it's another option, and I fully support it going forward. We are dealing with desperate times here on water, and I just think that option should be made available as soon as possible. I know there's going to be some administrative dealings that the city is going to have to take some time to set up, and that's just, that's going to take more time than if we delay this even further, it's going to set that further back down the road when I think there are some things that need to take place, and people need to just have all the options on the table available. Thank you.
Jane, Councilmember Walter, if you have a quick second. In the program in Windsor in 2012, did that have the no prepayment as well when that was rolled out in Windsor?
To my recollection, no, or yes, it did have a prepayment ability in there as well. I think with that model, and Chris, you may also try and, because I know you were involved in that, too, but I believe it did not have the ability to pass along to the next owner of the house. So this model is a little bit different structure, taken from lessons learned from the town of Windsor. And so with this, when they put the water savings program together, they looked at, you know, what worked well but didn't, and this was one of those refinements that they made to this program.
And do you know if the Windsor program involved encumbering the property?
I would like to speak to that issue, because that's a, the on-bill charge is not a lien on the property. So it doesn't encumber the property. It is part of the water service, and the notices that is filed with the Recorder's Office is to ensure if the home is sold, that a buyer is fully apprised, that the property is in the program, but it is not a lien on the property.
Okay.
So it does not encumber the property.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I really think this program should move forward. I still struggle with the one component. I still feel people should have a right to pay it off, but I feel it's a tool that people have a right to opt in, and I think we just need to make tools available. There's a lot of issues with water. Right now, there's people that are struggling that really do need it, so I think we should just move forward. But with that said, I also think we need to look for other tools that are, and make those available as well. But this is one tool, it's up to each individual. I'd be a little concerned as a homeowner to buy into a 10-year program that I couldn't get out of. But again, some people may be in a situation where that's the only tool they have, and they need it. So I don't think we should take that away from them. So I'm prepared to move forward with this this evening.
Yeah, and I would like to say that there is a clause in the agreement that says that we could make amendments to this agreement, and both parties would have to provide it in writing. So there is an alternative if you want to move forward with it at this point.
I think that's some really good questions were asked tonight, and some clarifications were made. I have the benefit of sitting on our CPA and getting the presentation, and I got it again, planning and sustainability. So this is my third time through, and so I was pretty satisfied. But I think you asked some really powerful questions and gave really great feedback to Chris to hopefully make the program even better. But I really appreciate Jane calling in and kind of, you know, clarifying, you know, some of the key issues, and the fact that this is completely voluntary, and it's a finance mechanism that makes financing these improvements available to people who may not have a great credit score, or, you know, it's allowing you to, you know, to pay for these improvements with the money that you already saved. Because not everybody can take advantage of the home equity line of credit. And I appreciate the clarifications as far as how this does not encumber the program. And just remember that this is, you know, the Bayren program is, this is a grant program to invest in Californians, and so that we can make water savings a way of life. And, you know, our ratepayers are hungry for resources like this, and I just see that this is one way that we can help them, you know, improve their quality of life, lower their bills, and, yeah, move forward with water savings. So I'm happy to hear the really good questions and great support from Chris, as usual, at our CPA. And hopefully, yeah, we can move this forward this evening. And with that, I would like to make a motion to approve the, after we hear from Gus.
Thank you. You know, Jane, thank you for calling. You know, I always appreciate your insight on a project. I guess the problem I'm having still is, you know, California is probably the most liberal state, and probably has the best consumer protection laws of any state in the country. And here we are prohibiting people from paying a loan off early. And I, that just doesn't sit well with me. It wasn't the case in Windsor, and I wish it wouldn't be the case here. But as long as it is, I'm not going to be able to support it. Not that it's not a good program. I would love to have it if we could just give the option to pay it off early. Thank you.
So, and I don't disagree with Councilmember Walter. I do think it is not an option currently, and what I'm comfortable with is it's fully disclosed, they go into it with their eyes open, they sign the paper. I still don't like it, but I'm okay with it since I know a lot of people could use this program today. And I think it's really, it would be a disservice not to at least allow those that need it to be able to access it today. Thank you.
Before we go ahead and call on the vote, I would like to comment that, Chris, I want to make sure that in the outreach, it is thoroughly engaging those people that normally do not take advantage of these problems, because of lack of information, because of lack of understanding, or because of any other barriers, including landlords. So if we were to pass this today, that's one of the things that is very close to me, and it's one of my big concerns. What is that campaign, that outreach campaign, beyond a leaflet in multiple languages? It has to be more than that. Is that something we can work on?
Yes. The design of the program is that outreach is guided by the city and the utility. So your priorities will shape how the outreach happens, and also inform perhaps how we conduct the outreach, if you have advice for us about certain communities that may receive information through a certain type of outreach that is different than a mainstream method. So we would definitely work closely with you to design the outreach strategy so that you are reaching the people in your community that you want to receive this benefit. And we will gladly take your advice on best ways to communicate the value and make the participation of those folks easy and satisfactory.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm particularly interested in the elderly, because they are victims of so many scams, and they need to understand that this is not one more scam. Also, with the Latino community, and many of them who are renters. So those are two populations that I'm very concerned about. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
So we're going to close comment, and we have a motion on the floor?
Before I read the resolution by title only, Madam Mayor, I think that you make a really great point in that outreach has, is spotty, and we need to make sure that this gets into the hands of people who can really benefit the most from it. And I think that that's why it's so important that Cloverdale sign on with this, because I anticipate that all nine cities in Sonoma County are going to sign on to this. And that way, our outreach and our message will be amplified by saying that this is available in all the municipalities as a resource to everybody. So if you live in Cloverdale and you work in Santa Rosa, you might see advertising or social media, or pamphlets, or posters, you're hopefully going to, you know, or see it at your favorite, you know, restaurant in Santa Rosa, and then come home and go, oh, hey, I can do that in Cloverdale, too. So I think that it's important that we sign on to it for that reason, because we'll just amplify the message when we're working with the other cities in the region. So if I may, I'd like to recommend a resolution by title only, "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale Determining Schedule of Rates and Fees Applicable to Water Service Customers of the Utility Participating in Water Upgrades Save the Program Who Meet the Eligibility Criteria Specified in Exhibit 8 Below and Receive Service Under the Program."
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Based on the repayment schedule, no.
Vice Mayor Lamb?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
And Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Thank you.
And I suggest that we speak to the people in Sebastopol, the council members, and also the staff, to see how that program is being implemented, any kind of hardship that they may be encountering at this moment, so that we can avoid those bumps on the road.
So now we will move on. Any communications that council may discuss at this time, written communications sent to council members? Okay, so we'll move on to public hearing. Public hearing items will begin at the time shown or as close thereafter as possible to allow for completion of the item. Number seven is consideration and possible adoption, resolution establishing and updating the scheduled fees and charges for city services and repealing previously adopted and conflicting fees and charges of such services.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. The item for you tonight is the master fee schedule for fiscal year 21-22. This is a part of our routine process to bring for annually a master fee schedule that sets forth our, you know, the list of planning, engineering, and other miscellaneous fees for the city. This is a requirement that we've been required for formal adoption by council. Tonight is a public hearing, but what I'd like to do is turn this over to our Finance Director, Susie Holmes, to provide a brief overview and update on the master fee schedule, and some of the revisions that are included therein that are really reflective of some of the changes that council adopted over the last year. So I'll turn it over to Finance Director, Susie Holmes.
Thank you, David. Yeah, this is going to be very, very easy. The only changes that are in this fee schedule are water, wastewater, which we've already approved, and we're just, all we're doing is making sure that it's in the fee schedule. Comes the critical processing fees, which again, we've already approved, we're just putting them in the schedule. We did remove some of the fees that were covered by our north animal contract, and we updated one fee that was based on our municipal code. It was very simple, there was not a lot of changes, everything had already been approved or was covered by our municipal code. And again, I just want to make sure that we, I think it's really important, though, we say one more time that these, all of these fees have already been approved, there's no changes to any other fee other than the ones that have been outlined tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Susie, you mentioned something. Could you just repeat again about the fees for animal services? What did you say about that?
Yeah, so the fees that we would have collected- Yeah. So the fees that we would have collected had we been doing the service, those go away now because we're paying the animal control to do that.
So what happens if they call us up tomorrow and say, you know, we're not going to do your contract anymore?
Then we would have to bring this back.
Okay. We just want to leave them in there in case the day ever comes that we have to have them on our, on our records?
I have them. They're just not on the schedule right now. And I don't think we want to have them on there because it's not a charge that we, it's not a fee that we charge.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments?
No hands are raised on, Susan, here. Okay, so I'll bring it back.
Mayor, if you can, just to reflect that you opened the public hearing, there was no comments, or nobody from the public that would like to comment. You are closing the public hearing to bring it back to council.
There is. I got it.
So no other comments on this, and it's closed and comes back to council? And, yes, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the argument by title only, please. City, City of Cloverdale City Council, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, establishing and updating the schedule of fees and charges for city services and repealing previous adopted and conflicting fees and charges for such services.
Second. Thank you. Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Land?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
And Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Thank you.
And now, public hearing and consideration of an urgency ordinance amending Chapter 1305, Conservation of Water Supply of the Cloverdale Municipal Code, and a resolution declaring stage four to five water shortage emergency, mandating water conservation measures, and continuing the suspension of water permits pursuant to Cloverdale Municipal Code, Section 1305, thirteen point oh five, point zero three zero. So, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we're going to walk you through a presentation this evening regarding the, the actions that we're requesting council. And just to take a moment here as our city clerk gets up the presentation. Tonight, we're going to give you a little bit of background and overview of some of the previous actions that are really leading up to, in particular, the, the urgency ordinance, but also the resolution with regards to the water shortage emergency. I'd like to start out on the next slide, Irene, by introducing our, our water team. And I'm going to encourage Irene, if she's available, to bring in our senior water operator, Darren Hernandez.
Excuse me. I think we need to take a bi- a short break. Two, three minutes. Is that okay? Because this is going to be a long.
It's up to, it's up to the pleasure of you, Mayor.
Okay. So give us three minutes, please. Okay, we'll call in the meeting back to order. And go ahead.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of council. Tonight, again, is a, is a public hearing to consider an urgency ordinance amending Chapter 13.05 of the Cloverdale Municipal Code, specifically the section regarding conservation of water supply of the Cloverdale Municipal Code. And likewise, we're also asking council to consider a resolution declaring either a stage four or stage five water shortage emergency, which would mandate water conservation measures and continue the suspension of water permits pursuant to the municipal code. So what we're going to do tonight is walk council through a presentation. I'd like to introduce our team this evening. I, I call this team our, our water team. First, starting with our, our legal team is, of course, our city attorney, Jose Sanchez. But also joining us this evening via Zoom is Viviana Hager. We like to refer to as Vivi. She's of council with Myers-Nabe. And likewise, we also like to introduce Palmer Hilton, who's an attorney with Myers-Nabe that specializes in, in water. Of course, your city staff that are really working on the key water issues for the city, including myself as your city manager, noting that we don't currently have a city engineer, a public works director who would often lead up this effort. But we do have joining us Darren Hernandez, who's our, our senior water treatment plant operator. And he does a lot of reporting and really has the best operational understanding of our, our water system. And then, of course, you know, as these, these issues do affect water financing and utility billing, our Finance Director, Susie Holmes. We're also, which we'll talk a little bit about tonight, is a curtailment order. We're working on bringing forward a technical assistance team of Woodard Curran, who is a professional consultant that we've worked with for a number of years on both water and wastewater. The, the team there is Ian Jaffe and Leslie Dumas. They most recently presented to council the Urban Water Management Plan, which is a part of what we're going to be discussing tonight and the actions that staff is requesting. So next slide, Irene. So what we'd like to cover and provide an overview, again, and kind of set up the context for the requested actions is an overview, a brief one, albeit of the Urban Water Management Plan, and most specifically, the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, followed by a specific discussion of the water conservation ordinance. And that is the urgency ordinance that we're, we're asking council to take action on. I do want to note that council previously adopted a resolution setting forth a water shortage emergency, stage two, with a 25% mandatory reduction. And of course, we, as I mentioned, we're going to talk a little bit about the curtailment order that was issued last week by the State Water Resource Control Board, and ultimately, the urgency ordinance, and the updated water shortage emergency. So next slide, Irene. Okay. So it might be a question about what is an urban water management plan? This, this is a, a five-year plan that the council adopted. It, it is a, a state requirement for water systems that have over 3,000 connections. We have just roughly 3,300. So the requirement for, we are subject to the requirement to have an urban water management plan. And one of the key elements of that plan is it does establish and track what are what's referred to as per capita water reduction targets. You'll hear the term tonight, GPCD. That's gallons per capita per day. And that's a term that we might reflect as we, as we go forward in this presentation. And of course, it is a requirement for, for state funding to have the urban water management plan. Next slide. Just by reference, council did adopt by resolution urban water management plan on May 26th, and that was subsequently submitted, or filed, as they call it, with the Department of Resources, Department of Water Resources. Next slide. So just to touch on the, the GPCD targets, the requirement was to meet the 2020 target of 139, and that's gallons per capita per day. So it's kind of a per person usage, our, our gallons per capita per day up to 2020. It was 117 gallons. And that's just kind of an important reference point that you'll see as we, as we talk about our water conservation goals tonight. Next slide, Irene. So this, this reflects, again, this is a forecasted projection of our population that is provided by AAG, and is, and is based on the state population forecast for California. What this shows is the demand in million gallons by our, our kind of major use groups, single family, multifamily, commercial, industrial, and then, and then irrigation. So as you can see there, in 2020, the total production was 393 million gallons. The way that worked out is 81 million gallons per day for, for residential uses. And again, that 117 figure for the, the entire city. So what that, what that shows is that the residential uses are the bulk of the water use and water demand that we produce for community. Next slide, Irene. One of the key components of the Urban Water Management Plan, it's, it's technically adopted separate, but it is part of the document, is a Water Shortage Contingency Plan. These, there were some new regulations that were, that came to effect, and that was reflected in the, in the Urban Water Management Plan, the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. Really, the goal is to address potential supply shortages. Again, you know, often the perspective is if you have, you know, a catastrophic impact, let's say, to your water system, or maybe you have a well failure, or, you know, you're unable to produce water. And it didn't specifically address just, you know, regulatory reduction requirements, but the impact is the same. Next slide. You know, these are just some typical demand management measures that help address and encourage water use reduction, of course, metering, public education, and then, of course, as we talked tonight, you know, water conservation programs, like Lake Dale and Dale Financing Program. So the Water Shortage Contingency Plan really is, is, the intent is to have a plan of action to identify how the council is going to respond to shortages in our water supply. And, and what you see on the slide here is, is the contents of your Water Shortage Contingency Plan, including reliability analysis, annual water supply demand, and assessment procedures. But most importantly, and this is what we're going to talk a lot about tonight, is the six standard water shortage levels. Because that's really what we're trying to do with the urgency ordinance tonight, is to align the UNI code with the, the updated Water Shortage Contingency Plan and Urban Water Management Plan. Next slide, Irene. So as I indicated, there, there are six stages or six levels in the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, simply identified as stage one through six. Each one of those has a corresponding reduction target in terms of, of, of water supply. And you can kind of look at it in increments of, of 10%. So stage one, less than 10. Stage two is, is 10 to 20. Stage three, 20 to 30, and so on. And this is the, the, the new proposed plan level, which is different than our existing UNI code, which only provided for three stages. As you know, the current stage two was between 20 and 30%, whereas the new stage two is proposed, the new proposed stage two is between 10 and 20%. But next, next slide, we'll walk through each of these real quickly. So Water Shortage Contingency Plan, stage one, is a trigger, again, voluntary compliance. There's no surcharges, no penalties. And the goal is to save up to 15% into the stage, largely through public education and suggestions on how customers can manage their, their water use. Next slide. Stage two, that's where we move from voluntary to mandatory. The water shortage surcharge does kick in. There is an opportunity, if council so desires, to implement penalties. Some cities have done that to really encourage meeting those conservation targets. The estimated water savings level in the current urban, or the adopted water, Urban Water Management Plan is, is 22%. Again, showing some of the actions that are taken for this stage includes the public outreach, education, limited irrigation schedules, and some limitations on actions like filling your swimming pool. Next slide. Stage three, again, just moving, I'm going to move through these quickly. Feel free if you, raise your hand if you, if you want me to slow down. This is triggered targeting water supply shortages of between 20 and 30%. Again, it's mandatory compliance. Water rate surcharges apply, and there's an estimated water savings of up to, up to 43%. Next slide. The stage four, and this is kind of where we're going to start honing in on what our staff's recommending tonight. Stage, stage four, between 30 and 40% mandatory compliance. Surcharges do apply. Penalties can be levied if council adopts them. And there's, you know, an estimated water savings of up to potentially 55%. Again, these, these start, we have more prescriptive requirements in terms of actually setting per capita residential water allowances. And remember, the, the target for water management was 117 gallons per person per day, or 117, 117 GPCD. Next slide. Stage five is a, a water supply shortage between 40 and 50%. Again, compliance mandatory surcharges apply. Penalties can apply. And again, more prescriptive water restrictions. Next slide. Last but not least, is the stage six. This is really triggering very significant reductions in water use. All the other compliance measures continue to apply, and there would be, it provides for a very, you know, adjustment of the per capita residential allowance to, to ensure that we're able to, you know, meet the health and safety needs of our, of our residents. Next slide, Irene. So what the, what the Water Shortage Contingency Plan does, it's, it contains communication protocols. It's, it's really got a list of prescriptive measures that can be implemented by the city to ensure or addressing the compliance needs for our water system. And at, at each stage that, of the water shortage emergency. And that's, that's again, set forth in, in the plan. Next, next slide, Irene. So currently, Water Conservation Ordinance is, is set forth in Cloverdale Municipal Code, Chapter 1305. It was, you know, adopted in, in 2014. At that time, it was current with state law, and particularly the Water Code section. The, the goal of this ordinance was ultimately to conserve the water supply for the greatest public benefit, but also to reduce water use, and to try to do it as fairly inequitably as possible by declaring an appropriate water shortage emergency, given the conditions. This, this section of the UNI code also is the section that provides for suspension of new connections to the water system. As council may recall, you did adopt the resolution that provided for suspension of new connections. It also defines water waste prohibitions, and the current code contains three, three stages rather than the six as required by the State Water Code. Next slide, Irene. So currently, the council has set a stage two, and with a 25% mandatory reduction. Want to note that, that the context for this is that the Russian River watershed is, is in a historic drought. It's been reflected in, in both actions taken locally and at the state, with our board who declared, our board supervisors declaring a local drought emergency, but government loosened signing a state of emergency proclamation for, for both Sonoma and Mendocino counties. And then our council took action to declare the stage two water shortage emergency on April 28th, and then subsequently adopted a, a resolution declaring a local drought emergency, and also restricting water, water, new water connections. Next slide. So on May 26th, as, you know, conditions did continue to deteriorate as the drought, you know, continued to worsen, there were, there was a number of actions taken by the regulatory agencies. They notified the senior stakeholders that they were developing emergency drought regulations that ultimately could affect diversions within, within the watershed, both the Upper Russian and the Lower Russian. And just for reference, the, the Upper Russian watershed is defined as the, the area between roughly Ukiah and Healdsburg. And then the Lower Russian River is really the, the portion of the river below, below the city of Healdsburg. So that is the line of demarcation between the Upper and Lower. We've continued to see storage levels decline in Lake Mendocino, and in particular, the target levels that were set by the, the State Water Resource Control Board, and working with San Juan Water, they, they, they were triggered in August. And really, that's about a 60,000 acre foot reduction below the target level. So it's a really significant decline in reservoir levels that we're seeing in Lake Mendocino. Next, next slide. Next, next slide, Irene. Just last week, and it's, is, following the, the State Water Resource Control Board's action to reduce minimum stream flow requirements, as well as the emergency regulations, the state board issued a curtailment order to 861 water right holders in the Upper Russian River. Those, the particular curtailment order, it targets pre-1914 water rights. For reference, the city, the city of Cloverdale is a senior water right holder within the Upper Russian River. We're one of the earliest diverters, if you want to call us a diverter, within the Upper Russian River watershed, so we, we do hold senior water rights that are very important to maintaining our ability to pump water, to provide water to our customers. Next slide, Irene. So, tonight, we, we're, we're going to consider a, updated urgency ordinance. The reason it's being brought forward as an urgency ordinance is because we believe it's necessary to adopt immediately so that it can set the, the six levels of water shortage emergencies, and put that, and provide that as part of the municipal code, because currently there's, there's only three, and it gives council a little bit more, more flexibility. Again, it also, in, in addition to establishing the six levels, it, it, it provides for a, a menu of conservation actions that can be implemented in response to, in, in response to the drought. Next slide, Irene. Continuing the discussion, the urgency is presented to, to enable us, staff and, and this council to implement the changes immediately, rather than doing a second reading and then having the ordinance be adopted 30, 30 days later. And we, we believe this is particularly important because of the, the curtailment order. There's some pretty strict timelines that we have to adhere to, to meet the, the requirements, and Jose's got, and our legal team is going to talk a little bit about that later. Do want to note that it's required by the government code to adopt the urgency ordinance. It does require four, four firm approvals at the council. Next slide, Irene. So, just, again, reiterating that currently, council has declared a stage two water emergency and has established a reduction goal of 25%. This 25% target was, you know, I, I think consistent with the, the State Water Resource Board's call for action, and, and the other actions that were taken by both the board and, and the governor, and as well as the deteriorating reservoir levels in Lake Mendocino. Next slide. So, one of the actions we are asking council to do tonight is to consider increasing the water shortage emergency stage from, from the current stage of stage two. We've indicated, in the staff report and, and the materials that we're, we're recommending that council consider, you need to declare either a stage four or a stage five water shortage emergency. Remember, we had a little time to talk about that. There's some real nuances in the order, or both in the urgency ordinance that we want to kind of shed light on, that will help inform council's decision on that. And did want to note that, you know, one of the reasons why I say, well, where's stage three when we're currently at stage two? Well, under the current ordinance, we're, we're at a stage two at 25%. That's basically equivalent to a stage three under the urgency ordinance. So, if you adopted stage two, you really wouldn't be making any changes in terms of addressing the need for additional conservation. I did, did want to note that, just for reference, the, the Healdsburg City Council did declare a local drought emergency, and they, they set their restrictions at a, at a 40% system-wide reduction in, in, for residential uses, as well as commercial reduction goals. So, yeah, that's just for reference for our neighbors to the south. Next, next slide. Did want to touch on our water demand tracking. Our, our water staff, as I mentioned, our senior water operator, Darren Hernandez, and Trevor Anderson, are at the water treatment point, monitoring water levels every single day. And what, what this chart reflects is our 2020 water use, and that's reflected in the, kind of, the orange, the dark orange colored line at the top. That, that, what that reflects is our, our water production at the treatment plant in 2020, for the month of July. And you can see that our, our water demand ranged from, you know, 1.6 to almost 1.8 gallons per day, and it, you know, was, there was obviously a seasonal component, or a, a, a daily change, and I'm sure it was often weathered, depending on how much was being pumped on a particular daily basis. But compared to the current year, 2021, which is the next line down, the, kind of the bright, bright orange, that, what, what we see the difference there is the impact of the conservation mandate. We've been kind of floating along, you see the blue line, which is the 25% conservation target of, based on 2020 usage. And you can see there's, there's times when we were below it, but there were significant days where we were also above that 25% reduction target, and often those little peaks correspond, I think, to, to hot days. Again, we're looking at the month of July, so if you were to look at this trend over a period of a year, you would, you'd see greater fluctuation happen. We're looking at kind of what, what's really kind of is the hottest month of the year, or one of the hottest months of the year. The green line, you know, reflected on this table, reflects what a, a 40% reduction would look like. Kind of, kind of good news, at least from, from my perspective, is, is, which we don't show here, is, because we only have a few days into August, is that we, we've really started to see the trend for our 2021 usage be below the, the 25% reduction target, and it actually is, is getting close to that, that, that 40% reduction, mind you. That's, that's not set in stone, it's just something that we've seen happen over the last few days. We think maybe that's a product of the messaging that's getting out there, and folks are really taking seriously the drought and maybe using less water. Whether that'll hold for the rest of the month remains unclear, but we are seeing that. Want to note that, that the dark blue line, almost at the bottom, identifies what 55 gallons per capita per day looks like. You can see, it's a very significant decrease from where we are today, and would require a very significant savings of water to, to meet that target. And again, we're going to talk about that 55 GPCD as part of the curtailment order, because that's a specific provision that is contained within, within the curtailment order. So, what you can see there is, if we're, and, and under strict interpretation of the curtailment order, if we were to try to meet that, what that means in terms of water, water reduction, or water use reduction. And I do want to emphasize that this has potentially significant impacts on the utilities' finances, because with the, not only the reduction in water use comes a, a very significant reduction in, in revenues, that are so important for us to pay for the maintenance of our system, to be able to save adequate fund balance to fund the capital improvement projects that we know are, are vital, and of course, in order to meet all of our regulatory requirements, which unfortunately are, are, are often quite expensive. So, we may want to, you know, come back to this item. Next slide, Irene. So, the recommendations tonight is to adopt the urgency ordinance, which would again update the water conservation section of your Cloverdale Municipal Code. The ordinance would again, put in place the six stages, and that's, you know, is, is, as required by the California Water Code, but also is consistent with your, your adopted Urban Water Management Plan. We are also asking staff, or asking council, excuse me, to adopt the resolution. We expect that council's going to have a robust discussion about, you know, what stage is appropriate, given the, the current drought we're in, but also the curtailment order. Ultimately, you know, how, it's really a policy of the council, how, how we want to, to, you know, meet, meet the conservation mandates. I wanted to note that, you know, something that's, I think, important for your content, in context tonight, is, in the curtailment order, it does provide for, for fines. It's, my sense is that the State Water Resource Control Board is very serious in terms of the curtailment order, and, you know, and, and they've indicated that, you know, if we don't, do not comply, we could, we could experience a $1,000 per day violation, as well as $2,500 in a particular foot of water diverted above that allowed limit. So, this, this again, could have potentially catastrophic impacts financially for, for the water fund. So, with that, I'd like to, next slide, Irene. Turn it over. Well, just touch on this again. The Water Shortage Contingency Plan, again, part of our recommendation, my recommendation in the agenda report, was to consider either a stage four, or our next slide, Irene, stage five. And, and part of that, that basis was looking at how we can move from our current 25% reduction to at least a 40%. The, the top end of stage four was identified as 30 to 40, and the stage five is 40 to 50. But I'm going to ask a city attorney, there's some nuances to that, to, to kind of cover, particularly given the language in the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, how council might want to look at that. So, we're going to talk more about that. Next slide, Irene. I did want to note that, depending on what stage is selected, does have an impact on the water shortage surcharges. These are included in the, the rate study that council adopted. They do, are implemented automatically when, when, when the city council declares a water shortage emergency. When council took action to declare the stage two, staff began the work of, of implementing water shortage surcharges, and those were reflected, I think, on the, first was on the, I think, on the June bills, in...
They were sent out July 1st.
Okay, definitely. And, and the, the current rate, the current surcharge rate was 15% based on the recommendation of a stage two, which was, you know, again, part or reflection of our existing Cloverdale Municipal Code. Couple of points on that is that the, the surcharge only applies to the consumption component of your bill. There's two, two pieces. There's kind of the fixed, there's the fixed component, you're having a meter, and then there's the, the consumption charge based on the number of units you use. Ultimately, the surcharge rate is less than the conservation standard that you, you consider. What that means for our customer is that they will, if they, if they, if they meet the conservation mandate, they, their bills will be lower than their normal water bills. Of course, it does mean they're paying more for less, but it's, it's, it's really a reflection of the, the fact that with water systems, you do have relatively high fixed costs, and if, if, if it didn't impose water rate surcharges, it could and would likely mean that we'd be back to council, asking council to consider further rate increases. So, it's a way of helping to generate revenue and ensure the financial viability of your system because of the impact of that significant water reduction. And it, you know, it, it's, it's kind of a way of mitigating, if you want to call it smoothing, potential rate increases going forward that would be necessary because of the significant remedy declines that would happen under, under, you know, warming conditions with strict water conservation standards. So, it is important to note that if, if customers do not meet that standard, that they would pay, pay higher water bills. And next slide, Irene, just to point out here, this is the table line from your, your adopted water rate study, just noting, again, the, the water rate surcharge is kind of between five and six on the table there. For a stage four, the water rate surcharge is 25%, and for a stage five, it's 35%. Again, currently, you're at a stage two under the previous, or under the existing three-stage system, and it's 15%. So, you can see there's, there's some rolling changes here. Next slide, Irene. So, with this, I'd like to turn it over to our, our city attorney. Again, city attorney Jose Sanchez, and, and joining him is Vivian Hagar and Palmer Hilton, who you may, from time to time, hear them late in. So, Jose, I'll turn it over to you.
Absolutely, David. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor of the Council, Jose Sanchez, city attorney. Irene, can we go back to just any of the, the slides that contain the water, the shortage contingency plan level, the, the six steps? That's perfect. I'm, I'm going to start off by talking to council, or talking about the actual, how do the stages work? Because one of the things, and I'll, I'll have some cleanup for the ordinance, that hopefully make it a little less confusing. Because when you look at this, it's kind of like, wow, it's, it's, goes stage one, stage two, stage three, what do the titles mean? I kind of want to walk through it a little, and then maybe make a, a little modification that's potentially going to make it easier. The stages, again, you've seen these before in your Water Shortage Contingency Plan that you've already adopted. What this urgency ordinance does is it actually puts it into your municipal code, because as we're adopting stages, they don't quite match up to now your new Water Shortage Contingency Plan, which is consistent with the new law that has us going from kind of three stages to now six stages. The way it works in the ordinance is you start off, and you can see it in the chart, you start off with stage one, and stage one is voluntary. And, and the key here is where some confusion happened is in the, where it says in the chart percentage shortage range, the ordinance is, is meant to, and the, the stages are meant to be triggered by certain events. Stage one, for example, you're, you're, you're looking at, at it when you're looking at your, your shortage. As far as your consumption, it's less than 10%. This becomes more evident when you're going up to a stage two. In your ordinance itself, for stage two, it states, "A stage two water shortage emergency condition may be declared by the city council upon a 10 to 20% reduction in the city's water supply." The confusion there is, it's often read as, oh, we could implement 10% to 20% reduction. It's really telling you when, when, when the trigger happens, then now you could implement that stage two. And that, again, is when you have 10 to 20% reduction in the city's water supply. You don't have enough water, water supply goes down. It states, just using stage, stage two, for example, "At the time of the declaration of stage two or greater, water shortage emergency, the, the city shall impose mandatory water use reduction seeking a 15% reduction in consumption." So, the stages actually trigger a set kind of a number. There is some flexibility in each stage for the city manager to go up or down, but when setting the stage, it has, it does have kind of a mandatory number. Where it got confusing in the ordinance is in the title, and I do apologize for that. It has 10 to 20%. So, it makes it seem as though, oh, that's my range, 10 to 20%. I'm going to go through a few changes later in the presentation to kind of make some adjustments. I'm going to be taking, I recommend that the council adopts this, adopt, adopt it with certain changes, for example, from the title, repeating 10% to 20%, because that's, that's confusing. When you read the title, if it says 10, mandatory 10 to 20%, you think, I could adopt my rationing there. The stage is clear, for example, in stage two, that the reduction you're looking at, reduction seeking a 15%, it actually sets, sets a number. When, when David was... When David was mentioning the recommendation of kind of the 40%, let's say if the council were to consider a 40%, automatically, we're looking at like Stage Four, Stage Five. Stage Four, for example, Stage Four states that, and we go to Stage Four, we are, the PowerPoint, perfect. It does have, "A Stage Four water shortage emergency condition may be declared by the city council upon a 30% to 40% reduction in the city's water supply." It's a little interesting time right now, because we're looking at water supply, but the reality is, the water supply is the larger water supply that's being dealt by the curtailment order, telling us, there's less water in the region, there's less water for us to use. And we'll talk about the curtailment order in more detail, the pre-1914 rights, and what does that mean in order to go from here. But just addressing the ordinance, the ordinance states, "At the time of declaration of Stage Four or greater water shortage emergency, the city shall implement a water allotment penalty method of up to 35% reduction." So that's kind of setting a 35% reduction, up to 35% reduction. Stage Five has the up to 45% reduction. So really, at 40%, you're looking at, you know, Stage Five. Stage Four and Five are very similar. The way the stages are meant to work, when you look at the ordinance, each stage has different requirements under it, and they build off each other. Stage One has certain requirements of what you can't do, certain water that it considers, you know, a waste of water. Stage Two incorporates everything that Stage One incorporates, plus it adds more. Stage Three incorporates everything before it, and it adds more. And it's supposed to work that way. That way, every stage kind of adds something different. One of the main differences between Stage Four and Five, for example, is irrigation. David pointed it out in the PowerPoint, where Stage Four allows for irrigation one day a week. Stage Five states no irrigation, outside irrigation, which is consistent with the curtailment order that's looking at just health and safety needs. So that'll be a discussion for the council as far as which stage to kind of, that you would like us to set, or you would like to set. Another point I wanted to make of the ordinance, which received a lot of conversation last time it came around, was the suspension of new connections to the city's water system. The proposed resolution, the draft resolution, re-implements that, and now it's actually re-strengthened the language of the suspension of new connections to the city's water system. Before, even if you had a declaration of your highest stages, what somebody bringing forth for project can go ahead and get a water connection if they, you know, one of the conditions were that they retrofit good quality water conservation fixtures and devices, and they had a certain, you know, 1.28 gallon per flush toilets, two and a half gallons per minute showerhead, et cetera, and five existing single-family detached dwelling units. That was one of the requirements. We saw that as not enough, just in looking at the curtailment order, because, and then there was a fee. You would have folks wanting to come bring big projects when we didn't have water, just pay a fee, or go put in a few toilets, and then they would be able to move forward. The amendments to the ordinance that you see before you actually make it a little more restrictive, where if, during different stages, for example, during stages Three, Four, Five, and Six, again, when you look at the new connections of property for which the applicant, now these are exceptions, where they could actually get their permits, has obtained all approvals required for development except potable water supply, agrees to defer installation of turf landscaping until the suspension period, and either retrofits existing water fixtures and devices, or otherwise complete water conservation projects sufficient to offset the anticipated use of water by the connection of the property, as determined in the sole judgment of the city engineer, or pays the city a fee if such fee has been established by the council by resolution that shall be used to pay for water conservation projects identified by the city. The fee established by the city council shall be in the amount sufficient to offset the anticipated use of the water by the connection of the property. I read that, it's important, if a project came forward, and they were ready to build, or they were ready for a water connection, well, if they show that they could go and improve different fixtures, different water system, whatever it was, to offset what they were going to use, pretty much have that, the no net impact on our water system, then pursuant to the ordinance, then they would be fine, keep moving forward if they met all the other conditions. That's a high bar to me, if a big project's coming forward. We thought that that was probably a little more in line, although some jurisdictions have that now, that are trying to be a little more in line of trying to conserve water. That, I'll remind you, that that's only in place while the drought's in place. So as soon as you suspend the, or remove the stages, then we no longer have a drought, we consider it, we're no longer in drought. Those restrictions go away. Then we go back to normal issuing water connections. Those are probably the biggest changes of the ordinance, just setting out, again, consistent with your Water Shortage Contingency Plan, your six stages and how they build upon each other, and then also the, just the modifications to that suspension of permit section. The, so I'm happy to take questions of the ordinance. We could give you the full picture first, and we could talk a little bit about the curtailment order, because I know that's pretty big on people's minds. What does this curtailment order mean? Why are we impacted? We have pre-1914 rights, and what are we doing about it? What are the next, the next steps? If it's okay, Mayor, maybe we'll cover the curtailment order, and then we'll come back with questions, or how would you like to? It just kind of all connects together.
I think we should talk about curtailment.
Okay.
So we can see how it might.
Perfect. At this point, I'll, Viviana, if you want to potentially kind of start providing a little overview, you and Palmer, please, as well, just on the curtailment order, specifically, I think what's important is just, you know, the authority that the curtailment order is being implemented. Why are we, as pre-1914 water right holders, being impacted? What does it require? What are the city, what are the city's options? What have we done so far? And what kind of, what are the next steps? Just illustrate some of those, some of those points, please.
That sounds great, Jose. Let me jump in. We wanted to get just a few points, so we wanted to address the question about what this curtailment order means for the city immediately. We want to address what the city's options are moving forward. I'll address those couple of things. And then Palmer, I think it would be helpful if you could address what the city's done so far, since you've worked so closely with that. So let's, we've heard a little bit about the order, so we just wanted to hit four quick points about that. We welcome your questions, of course. So what we're facing at this point is that the state board has issued orders to all water right holders, whether they're senior or junior water right holders. And this particular order is for the segment in the Upper Russian River watershed. And the order is essentially a cease and desist diversions, and it's linked to very technical calculations associated with the levels of water in Lake Mendocino. So when the levels of the lake, as David touched on in his presentation, went below a certain threshold level, and Sonoma County water started to make diversions for invasive uses, then the regulatory framework allowed this order to be issued. So to Jose's question, the city does hold pre-1914 rights, and the order is issued under a new water code section. So traditionally, the way the water code used to read, and some remnants of it still read this way today, the state board does not have that much authority to limit pre-1914 rights. So those questions remain, there are still questions now about the state board's authority over pre-1914 rights. And so we're looking at that from a legal perspective, but the board is relying on a new law that hasn't been interpreted yet. So those questions are unanswered, essentially. So at this point, in light of that ambiguity about the state board's authority, the item that I think probably resonated with the crowd here was the part of the PowerPoint presentation that highlighted the level of penalties that the state board is asserting. So non-compliance with this order has a potential to trigger penalties. So what we've observed is the city taking great diligent steps, notwithstanding that the order may not be fully authorized, it makes more sense from an economic standpoint to do what we can to avoid those penalties. So that's the order in a nutshell. So I wanted to touch on, I guess, four things, again, with regard to what the city's options are moving forward. So as we heard in the earlier presentation, the order right now allows the city to use 55 gallons per person per day. So we don't know that the city can hit that target. As we saw from the graph that Dave Kelly put up, you're trending very, very well to meet your 25% conservation goal, but you're not trending yet to meet that 55 gallons per day. The city is evaluating those calculations with an expert, and we're double-checking some of the state board's calculations as well. So we're still looking at that 55 gallon per day. But right now, one option you have moving forward is to meet the 55 gallons per day. We don't know if we're there, if we're probably not there. The second option that you have moving forward, and we're preparing this right now, Palmer has it probably, you know, up on his screen, we're preparing a petition to allow the city to exceed the 55 gallons per day. We're recommending filing that, and we're evaluating the needs associated with that. The third option that the city has moving forward is to file a more robust petition that we're used to doing, which is a petition for reconsideration. It must be filed within 30 days of the order, which would be by September 1st here. And there, we actually have the opportunity to make more legal arguments about the lack of authority for this order would be an assertion because of your pre-1914 rights and other things like that. So that's a little ways down the road, but not far. And the other thing that I skipped over that comes before the petition for reconsideration is we're also looking at calculating non-consumptive uses. There is an ability to continue uses that are non-consumptive, notwithstanding the 55 gallon limit. So to give you a, I guess, a layman's example of that, and others more technical could probably speak to that better, but when you take water out and you use it, and then you put the water back, and you haven't consumed it, that's a non-consumptive use. So hydroelectricity would be an example, using water for backwashing and putting it back would be an example. So again, to recap, four options going forward. Meet the 55 gallon limit, we don't think we're there, there, there yet. File a petition to increase that, we're preparing that now. File information about pre-non-consumptive uses, we're evaluating that. And lastly, file the petition for reconsideration by September 1st to preserve those legal arguments. So that are, those are the options moving forward. And so next, we want to touch on, let Palmer touch on that, some of the key points about what the city has done so far.
So at this point, as it pertains to the curtailment order, which the city received on August 4th, there was a deadline on Monday to file a certification to the state water board regarding this curtailment order. That certification that we filed on Monday, it asserted the city's pre-1914 rights, it gave a breakdown of what the city's water uses are, and it gave a breakdown of what the conservation measures the city has implemented thus far, and the intentions going forward of the city's conservation measures. That includes this urgency ordinance, as well as the declaration of a stage. Then the next step is what Viviana discussed a little bit, which is the petition for increasing use. This we are working on right now, and this petition essentially breaks down what the city's water needs will be, regardless of this 55 gallon per person per day limit. It quantifies, in the emergency regulations, there is a few defined minimum health and safety needs. The biggest category amongst this is water for domestic purposes. We've seen that the city's water use is primarily domestic water use, and so in order to satisfy these minimum health and safety needs, we think it's in the interest of the city to petition to use more than this 55 gallon per day in order to meet these minimum safety needs. This petition is going to break down what these needs are, break down what percentage the city thinks it can conserve, and essentially ask for an increased allotment. And then the next is this non-consumptive use petition, which at that point, we need to calculate what the city's non-consumptive uses are, to see what level of water use we can subtract from this 55 gallon per day allotment that is calculated with the city's total water use. So at that point, this is what the city's done in regards to the curtailment order in addition to this urgency ordinance and proposed declaration of a stage of emergency.
So, thank you, Viviana and Palmer. So it's a tough situation. We get a curtailment order, there's questions regarding the pre-1914 rights. We are, as Palmer mentioned, we are, we have submitted documentation to the board, let him know about our pre-1914 rights, or just, you know, pointing them out. But we're looking at the, at the curtailment order, the curtailment order, even the 55 gallons, the curtailment order doesn't address, doesn't specify, and correct me if I'm wrong, Palmer, it doesn't specify how to deal with, with commercial, with retail, with industrial. Jurisdictions are going to be having trouble, kind of, how do we, how do we encompass everything? Is it 55 gallons per individual, but then if we incorporate everything? Those are the calculations. That's why the experts are bringing in experts that are really crunching the numbers, it's so important. And David has done that already, bringing in the same consultant that helped with your water management plan. But we're looking at that as far as to start talking about, how many gallons do we need? Well, that depends on, is it all together? Is it just simply, how much water are you producing or using? You know, then you divide it up by the, your, look at your census, your population? Or is there some math to be done? Residential's here, commercial, commercial, industrial here, here's what we're doing with commercial and industrial, setting percentage drops, here's what we're doing, and here's where we're trending with residential. Those are the questions that we're exploring, and we're bringing in, obviously, professionals to help kind of crunch the numbers, water experts. The, and that's kind of where we're going to go forward, where Viviana and Palmer mentioned, we're going to keep, we're going to file some things with the board. Your neighbor, our neighbor Hillsburg, they ended up also, they filed, they filed with the board as well, where they know, hey, we can't meet the 55 gallons, and counting different things. They're going through a list of kind of increasing that number in order to match something that they think they can meet. But they have gone to 40% reduction for water, including the no irrigation outside. So they're also saying, here's what we've done so far. That's kind of what we're building, we're building the record. But again, we have started with the pre-1914 rights. Those are very important. I know I've heard the council bring that up several times in the past, but that has been pointed out to the board. So that's, that's kind of where we are, and that's why we're here tonight as well, and that also explains the urgency of the ordinance, where we don't want to get into a situation where penalties are starting to- penalties are starting to be assessed. We want to make sure at least we're making every good effort that we can, and show the board that we're making efforts.
I have a question regarding the statement that you, that Vivi said. It's a new law not interpreted yet. What does that mean?
And so, thank you for that question. So the last drought resulted in curtailment orders that were challenged. And one of the challenges was that the State Board did not have authority over pre-1914 water right holders. So the legislature passed a new section of the water code that this order relies on. So the intent of that new section of the water code is to be able to limit water right holders that are pre-1914. Because it was passed after the last drought, because it was passed specifically to reach pre-1914 water right holders, the way to challenge it hasn't really ripened because we haven't had another drought. This is the first drought we've had of this severity. Even though that new section hasn't been tested, hasn't been interpreted, and it's arising now because of this drought, the same legal arguments that existed before exist here because of the way that it, because of the way that it reads, and because of the section in the statute that it appears. So what, one thing is very, very clear about the pre-1914 water rights, and that is that they are senior, and they should come first before any junior holders. So one of the things that we've done is assert that. Whatever you do, State Board, we come first, we're senior. So even if you have this authority, which we contend there still is a way to challenge that, then we should not be curtailing more than a junior water right holder. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Okay, move to the floor.
Madam Mayor. Thank you, if I can, thank you for that presentation, though it's not good news by any stretch. My question is, we have, for a small city, we have at least several, at least two wineries that I'm aware of, and at least two craft beer establishments that bake. And I know, just doing the math, it takes anywhere from three and a half to six gallons to make one gallon of beer, gallons of water. Three and a half to six gallons of water to make one gallon of beer is what I read. I haven't verified that, but that's what I had read. And on the wine side, it takes anywhere from about six gallons of water to make a gallon of wine. So again, I haven't verified that, but that's just by going on the internet and Google it, what the average is. So there could be a little less, could be a little more, I don't know. But with a city our size, you have at least two wineries that I'm aware of, and at least two craft beer that I'm aware of in our city. That's a lot of water, and when you take the math, that's 3,300 connections, times that by 55 gallons per connection per day, or maybe, I don't know how we fit the population into the equation, but that's a lot of water if this is all added into the overall picture. So I'm just concerned, though these are important businesses, they create jobs, and they do a tremendous service, but it's all being commingled, and I'm just concerned how that's going to impact the average resident that lives here trying to meet that criteria. So I just, I guess I'm sharing that to see, is that going to be part of the letter that goes out to the state trying to explain that small city, but we have a unique situation here with these different businesses?
Yes, I think this goes back to what Jose mentioned, that the way that we calculate what comes into the calculation and what doesn't come in is something that is somewhat referenced in the regulation, there's a calculator in there that the city's expert is going to be running for us. But notwithstanding that, we want to get a handle on how much water is used for commercial establishments, because even though there could be, you know, an impression that a lot of water is used, there's only a certain kind of water usage that's at issue here. So we need to get those numbers, and our preliminary numbers continue to suggest, as we provided in the various presentations, that the vast majority, somewhere upwards of 70%, maybe as high as 76% actually, are for domestic uses. So even though it would seem like these industrial, commercial uses, like the winery and brewery would gobble up a lot of water in comparison to your residents, you have the highest form of beneficial use, which is domestic use, which works very, very well for the city's advantage.
And pegging off that a little bit, the 76% of domestic use, that suggests that the most savings we can make is through, there's curtailings on the night.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What's the magic number of 1914? What's, what does that represent in the equation?
So in 1914, the State Board was authorized by legislation passed in that year to begin issuing permits and licenses for water diversions. Anything that predates that law is considered grandfathered in and is regulated by, I don't want to get too technical, but by what we call common law principles, and you fall into that sort of grandfather stage of regulation.
And then everybody along the Russian River, all the cities are also going to be limited to 55 gallons per person? What are we looking to increase ours to from 55? Has that number been settled on yet?
You know, the sound is not perfect, so I'm not sure entirely heard every word of that, but I think the question I heard was, is everyone being requested to curtail to 55 gallons per day? Do I have the question right?
Yes.
And that is, that is the case. The State Board took the same approach across the board for every water user.
And what are we looking to increase ours to? Have we decided on that number yet?
And I think, I think I could jump in, that we haven't decided.
Okay.
Through the process and through the getting the experts to come in, do the math, crunch the numbers as far, all the water experts that helped us with our water management plan, I think that exercise will tell us exactly what we're, what we're asking for, taking out those things that are needed for health and safety, for example, in order to increase those 55. Also figuring out how to address the, the commercial industrial aspect, as Councilmember Palmer was just mentioning, that's something that also concerns us when we're looking at it, it not particularly addressing it. We're looking at what the calculator says that they've included, but that's what the experts that the city has retained will help us with.
Thank you.
So if I, tell me if I have this right, what we're saying is that the State Board's asking us to go to the 55 per person per day, as they are all of the other municipalities. But one of our arguments is that because our water rights are pre-1914, under, and where common law, I won't even go into that, applies, we would possibly make an appeal to the board to say that we should be first because we're senior, and that we shouldn't have to curtail down to 55. And that's one of the things that we're talking about, whether or not we should ask for it. But I'm hearing that that's something that's already on its way to the State Water Board from the city of Cleveland. Okay, did I get that right?
You got that right, and I think, and Vivi, maybe you could add more detail there, but it's, we have pre-1914 rights, so whatever you're asking for other folks to curtail, we shouldn't be curtailing more than anybody else. And just a clarification, maybe Palmer or Viviana, you can help me with this. The jurisdictions there, have they hit all the jurisdictions with the 55, all the jurisdictions as far as the water, the water providers with the 55 gallons? Or were they, I know they were phasing it, have they completed it, hit everybody across, let's say, Sonoma County at this point?
I'm not sure I heard your question, Jose.
Okay, so, can you hear me now, Palmer? Trying to catch the mic here. The question is, one of the questions that Councilmember Walter had was, the 55 gallons, has that been applied to all jurisdictions, let's say in Sonoma County?
It's, it's all diverters on the Upper Russian River that are municipalities.
So that's that divide that we, that David was talking about, that divide of the Upper Russian River?
So Ukiah to Healdsburg, okay. And then can I just ask one more follow-up question? So if we're looking at all of our water use as a pie, 70%, 76% of the pie would be domestic use, and so it sounds like we also haven't looked at the, sorry, what was the term that Vivi used? Water that gets taken out and gets put back in. So we haven't, that's separate.
Non-consumptive.
We are non-consumptive.
We haven't quantified the non-consumptive uses at this point.
There you go. So that's what we're looking at. So that's probably why the Water Board is concentrating on that 76%, and I can't imagine that City of Ukiah or City of Healdsburg would be that much different from ours, because that is the lion's share of the water consumption. So, and so that's what, so that's what we're looking at. Okay, thank you. That helps.
I need to make sure that I understood, that part of the appeal is going to show our good faith effort, right? So so far, we've complied with 25%. We are contemplating to increase that in order to comply with the law so that we may get a greater increase of usage, correct? That we may get more than 55 per person. Okay.
And Mayor, councilmembers, if I can, I think to touch on a question asked by Councilmember Walter, I want to just refer back to that figure in the, in the presentation, which referenced the 2020 GPCD figure. That was 117 gallons per person per day, so, you know, in comparison to 55. So as indicated in the chart, the table, or the chart, the data chart showing that we've, you know, started to hit that 25% reduction, if you take that 25% reduction off of the 117, we're trending about 88 GPCD right now. And that weighs into how you might want to look at implementing a further reduction. So, you know, again, think we've, for all intents and purposes, kind of met that 25%. If we want to do another, let's say, 20%, we're really targeting somewhere around 70 GPCD. So that kind of just, kind of gives you a perspective of where we are, or where we might be with these proposed mandated conservation measures. So in 2020, we're at 117. We're now trending about 88 gallons per person per day overall for the entire city. And we, you know, since council looking at the potential conservation target, if we do somewhere in the order of another 20%, we think we can hit the 70 gallons per person per day. Some of our preliminary analysis did show, just for residential only, not taking into account our industrial, commercial users, you know, we could, we can get to the 55 GPCD, looking at residential uses only, but I think it's a big lift when you take all of our water uses into account, water users. One point I also wanted to make, because I think it's important in the context of this discussion, is what council thinks about watering our landscapes. From my perspective, it is a health and safety issue if we, if we don't water at all or irrigate potentially, because it's going to be a much more drier landscape in our community. Of course, there's potential impacts with our sports and play fields, our parks, our community, and our sports leagues, and then also, if we're asking our residential users in our community to stop irrigating, you know, there's real potential for you to see some of our vegetation resources and assets not really make it through the drought. So it's, you know, just something for context, is you're weighing what our conservation targets are, and what the potential impacts of the curtailment might be, and impacts to our community related to, you know, water conservation. So, but those are all arguments that we are going to put in the context of the petition, because, you know, we do think it is important to, you know, for health and safety purposes, try to preserve those landscapes. But there are other means that we are pursuing to try to address some of the irrigation needs, and we'll be sharing with council some of the measures we've taken to try to address that. You may have seen some of that action in our parks today, because we were testing that. But I just want to kind of give you that, give you that framework.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, you know, I don't mean to seem foolish, but, you know, when I think of 55 gallons of water for me to use on a daily basis, I think I can function quite nicely with 55 gallons of water. You know, considering how many glasses of water I drink, how many pots of coffee I make, how long I'm in the shower, you know, yellow mellow, brown down, you know, all the safety. I think I can function with 55 as an individual. So, I mean, are we saying 55 is too low based on our past usage, which was somewhat wasteful in the past? Why are we saying that 55 gallons isn't enough? What is that based on?
Mayor, if I can, to address Councilmember Walter's question.
Councilmember Palmer, if you want.
Well, I had a question, but I do want to address what Councilmember Walter just had to say. You know, I don't think it would be considered wasteful. I mean, it's, I commend you that you can function well on 55 gallons.
I think I can.
But, you know, there's a lot of families, and they do have out of time guests, and they may have a shower, they may do laundry, they have little kids, and so they may be forced to do more than somebody who may be retired and not pay that predicament. So I guess what I'm saying is one size don't fit all. There are situations that dictate different needs for different families. But my question was, if I heard you right, did you say that this is only going to be applicable to municipalities, the incorporated cities? And so in the Upper Russian River, which is Ukiah down to the south end of Healdsburg? And what about those areas in between the incorporated cities? Does this order apply to them as well?
Regarding, in regards to it being applicable to municipalities, that is the 55 gallon per person per day limit. For other water right holders that do not meet that definition of a municipality, it's asking them to completely curtail their water use nothing.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you cut out. I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, could you repeat yourself, please?
Sorry, what?
You cut out. If you could just repeat that, I didn't.
So the 55 gallon per day limit is applicable to municipalities. Water right holders on the Upper Russian River that are not municipalities are asked, under this curtailment order, to at least cease their diversions, not use any water under their water ramps in the river. under their water ramps in the river. I didn't hear the second part of your question, if you could repeat that.
Thank you. So areas like Geyserville or Hopland and those areas would not be entitled to any water?
And Palmer, I think that the question becomes also, there is kind of the unincorporated area. So, it applies to water providers, right? And like the jurisdictions, the municipalities are water providers, they provide residential water, for example. If you had a water company providing water, or, let's say, to, or, to an unincorporated area, that's not a city. The domestic use, this applies to domestic use, correct? So we're talking about water providers, not just cities, but actual water providers that are providing it for domestic purposes. Is that correct for residential?
Did he hear you?
I don't think he could hear.
Sorry, is that a question for me?
Yes, just to clarify, maybe if I move a little more.
Move it to your.
Yes, it's municipalities and water providers.
Okay, the water providers, that's important. So, the water providers is, I think that that's what was missing of, because sometimes certain areas do not get their water by the city. They're not in a city, they're unincorporated, but they get water from another water provider. But as long as you're a water provider that's providing for domestic use, and if you're in this area, it would apply to them as well.
Correct. And the diversions come from the Upper Russian River.
Go ahead. There's probably some confusion, because those water companies and municipalities typically get their water from surface water, which is, what he's saying is that that's fed from the Upper Russian, the Upper Russian River is considered to be fed from Lake Mendocino. There are also several people between here and the southern Healdsburg who are actually utilizing the Alexander Valley aquifer, and that is groundwater, and they're two different sources.
Okay, I have a comment regarding the surcharges. We haven't discussed that, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to do so, but they seem a little high, given all the restrictions. And I think I only saw that at the end. So, could you give me the guidelines on that? Because I think I saw 12 to 38% surcharge.
I mean, can you pull up the slide? It's almost the next to last.
Well, it's here on.
So, Madam Mayor, I think the table that is reflected on the presentation highlights the water rate surcharges that apply by stage. So, I think you correctly identified the surcharge percentages, which range from a low of 12% for stage two, up to 40% for a stage, stage six. And they intervene at stage three, they're 18%, stage four, 25%, and then stage five, 35%. Those surcharges are kind of based at targeting the modeled use reduction, and it doesn't, it doesn't completely make up for the revenue loss that the utility is going to experience. So, it's trying to, you know, seek a spot that is reasonable in terms of maintaining the financial viability of your utility. But those are, again, those are recommended rates. Council, if you, so direct, you can, you can lower those surcharge rates per stage, with the understanding that, again, it's going to mean a greater revenue impact to the utility. And once the revenue's lost, it's, it's very unlikely that you'll be able to make it up.
Okay. Yeah, well, what I have doesn't demonstrate the same numbers you have there. And the urban plan, the one I got this morning had 15. Okay, I don't see that. Or maybe it's just not readable here. Okay.
The, I think the 15% is reflective of the current, there's a three-stage bar shortage emergency that's part of your current ordinance. And what we're recommending tonight is the urgency ordinance that would adopt and provide for the six stages. The surcharges that are applicable in each one of those stages has been adjusted accordingly. So that, I think the 15% is where we're at currently for stage two, which, if, again, stage two is equivalent to really a stage three of the new ordinance, the surcharge is 18%.
Any other questions we should open to the public? Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much. I think a lot of these questions can be answered by you, Jose. It's very simple. Healdsburg is in a stage that has no irrigation, but they offer gray water so that people can maintain something in their yards. Our city's already talking about wanting to try to save our own, and we're trying to possibly take that away from our population. We need to be very careful with that. So I'm wondering, is there an option out there for us? Because Healdsburg and these cities are already running low on that number, as I've been told.
And I'm not sure, I don't know, David, if you know, there's, the irrigation part of it, those are all great facts that we're going to be putting into documents that we turn to the board as far as getting the number, the gallon higher, right? Because, as David mentioned, also fire prevention, it does all roll into kind of health and safety. It's not just cosmetic, but it is, does have a health and safety component to it that we are looking to also address as when we, when we do that, when we submit, whatever we submit to the board, saying we need more than the 55. And that's what the numbers are, that's, I think you mentioned, the consultant that is, they're going to help the professionals that helped us with our urban water management plan, that are going to help us kind of break down where the water's going, that way we can get that number. But that's going to be, that's something also included that we're going to be discussing as well.
My next question is going to be, the population number for the 55 gallons per person is based off of the most recent census, I would imagine. Since that census, we have had a lot of growth in our town. Very, and that was going to be my next part of this, is we also have a workforce for our vineyards that is not counted in our census for the most part, by choice of their own. But it would help us extremely in our numbers, and I'm talking probably close to a 25% number here, that we would jump in our population if we went out and did a point-in-time type of census that was accurate. And is there a way for us to contest the population number that they base it off of if they have worst-case scenario?
So you're definitely reading, you're spot on. As far as the petition goes, those are all the points that we're going to be making as far as why, if you're just looking at the census, it doesn't make sense, why, for example, Healdsburg looked at potential tourists that come in, we should be looking at workforce that are spending their days here. Those are the things that we're going to be pointing out. I know Palmer has already started kind of preparing some of those, some of those arguments. But that's kind of what other jurisdictions are looking at as well. Well, if it could be, it could be easy, right? If we were, we were sure, here's our census, here's our number, and then here's our water, it's not that simple. And I think that's the point you're making. There are other circumstances that, that it's not a, there's no kind of a cookie cutter formula.
If we took that 88 gallons per person number right now, and we added 25% to our population, we would probably be down into the 60s or 70s as you would want to be. That's, that's my point of this, is if we jump our population, it lowers the amount that we're actually technically using per person right now. So we would be really close to using what we wanted already.
But that's a pending situation. So, you will be using census data and the percentage that we had here, which was, I think, we had a 70% response in census? I mean, that's a technical question that has to be added into the formula.
Just for reference, the table that was highlighted in the presentation for the 55 gallon, the 55 GPCD, did use the most current population figure provided by the Department of Finance for 2021. That was the best number that we could utilize for our population number. There's reference in the regulations about how that ties to census, because census is obviously only done every 10 years.
Right.
So, I mean, that's, that's part of the technical argument that we need to make, I think, assuming council supports our filing for the petition, is, you know, what is our population? We know the Department of Finance is a, you know, well-respected, you know, state agency for determining population estimates, but also building on that number for other things like our workforce, tourists, visitors, et cetera. It's going to be part of our technical argument to show that we have more people in order to meet their health and safety needs. Overall, water usage, you know, we're going to ultimately try to justify a greater number than just strictly looking at our population as reported by DOLF. And so that's where it gets into, you know, the technical work of identifying, you know, as best we can, what our GPCD is, you know, trying to take into account these other factors, you know, the non-consumptive factors. Because ultimately, the best number we have is really our production at our treatment plant, and we know that, you know, that's what we're using as part of our data reporting method. And that's what the state board is looking at, because we're reporting that weekly as required. Because what they did precipitating this emergency order is adopted a mandated reporting order, which now requires us to report the data. So it put an additional burden on our water staff to go into the portal every week and report exactly what we're producing from our, from our water system.
So regardless of all the efforts, we still have to go with a policy that indicates that we are increasing our savings so that we could get, hopefully, a positive result from the state.
That's part of the strategy that we'd like council to consider, and that's part of building our case. You know, one, one option would be to kind of say, hey, this is what it is, and, you know, we're sticking to it. Or, you know, do we take the approach of, you know, we are going to work within our means to encourage and support conservation, we're setting, you know, targets that are aggressive. We may not get to the 55, but we are going to do our part to try to reduce that demand, you know, but also reflecting that we want to do in a way that continues to meet the needs of our community.
So basically, we want to make sure that people understand that we might have a reduction down the road, instead of saving 50% or 45%, that we might be able to get away with 40% down the road. That we need to go high now, but maybe we can reduce later. Is that a possibility, Jose?
Absolutely. As you, whatever you decide, there's always the possibility of being flexible within your stages. So if you went really aggressive, the numbers came back, we're able to justify, the board says, yes, you're doing enough, and all of a sudden, we're doing better than we even get kind of the permission, I guess, or the allotment, then we could change our stages, right? As long as we're trending, do the math. And that's, that's why the technical data is important. But absolutely, if you were aggressive, you ended up, ended up having a lot of conservation, and now you exceeded the expectations, then you could always, you could always ramp it up, Bill.
Thank you. I think we need to start thinking about, what are we going to do? Because it's getting late. Yes. We interrupted that. So let's go ahead for public comments, please.
Okay. I think we have Jeannie, unless Bob is hiding.
No, it's actually Jeannie. Can you hear me?
Yes.
But Bob is, Bob came home, so he's here too. First of all, I want to make the comment that the audio is atrocious. I have heard maybe a third of the meeting that I can understand. So I don't know what's going on with the audio equipment. I think Jane Elias made a comment when she was doing too. So if my questions are not understandable, let me know. I am confused. Are we projecting a possible reduction of 55%? Or reducing it to 55 gallons per person? Because I know in our household, we started good habits during the last drought, and we've continued those. And when there was no rain the last few years, cut back even further on loads of laundry running the dishwasher. So if it's going to be a percentage reduction, how far back are we going to look to see what 55% of what is going to be? Because if we have to cut another 55% out of what we're doing now, we might as well move out. So if somebody could clarify that, and also fix the audio.
Jose, would you address that, please?
Well, I, the, what we're talking about today, and I don't know, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Fairly.
Okay, so what we're trying to do today is trying to figure out what percentage cut overall in the city would get us to the point of being able to meet, well, get close to that 55 gallons per person. I know that it's going to be kind of on the, how do we enforce that? We're looking at the data from 2020, I think, correct, David? Right now, that we have the complete data from 2020, to see if we could get down to that, to that number. Really, when the enforcement comes in, you're looking at, you know, is water being wasted? What's, what's, you know, are people out there washing their sidewalks with no, with just, just running water? Things like that for enforcement. But the reality is, what we're trying to do today is, or the council's thinking of, is more of the percentage, kind of like we did for the 25% recently. And I think we're trending very well, right, David? For the 25% right now? It's increasing that 25% to another number, and it's looking at the data from 2020.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nina.
Thank you.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Good evening, city council members, city staff, and all the support people that are helping us work through this issue. Just a couple of things. I wanted to thank Councilmember Paula for bringing up the impact on our, our larger businesses that rely on water. And there's, that's what they rely on to make their products. And then I wanted to also ask how, how this, how our reductions are going to impact our small businesses who rely on water for their essential services, as well as safety and health. I, and I don't know what the component is. I know you said most of it's domestic usage, but how do they, how do they curtail or minimize what they're using now in a way that will take care of the customers and they can keep the doors open? So I'm willing to work with whatever, whatever recommendations are made, and meet those people face-to-face, and help them curtail their usage, but maybe we can remember that they, that is their life's blood, and they've been impacted, they've been buffeted by COVID, they've been buffeted by drought, they've been buffeted by wildfires, it goes on and on. on. So thank you for your time, and I don't expect an answer right now, but we'll work together.
Thank you, Nina. Any other hands?
No other hands are raised, Mayor.
Well, I want to address Nina's question. You know, it is all of our, the whole council is concerned about businesses, and that is a question that we continue to ask the experts and the consultants. At this point, we feel good that 76% of the usage is domestic, and this is going to be defined as the technical appeal is presented to the state. So we will work on this, definitely. So at this moment, I think we... Do you want to give us some comments, please? You're here for a specific presentation to us?
For Great Creek Rancheria, I'm the representative tonight, and I just wanted to, to address your project. If I may, we've got a project coming up next month, and they were concerned about new hookups or how they proceed with their project that they've been working on for two years. And so if somebody could talk about possibly a will-serv letters, but they understand and recognize that people of Cloverdale come first. They just want to continue on with their project that they've been working on, and they have grants that are important to move the project ahead. They're probably a year or two away from actually connecting anyone to the system, but they want to be able to continue their process. And so if somebody could speak on that, they will be before you next month, but I thought tonight might be appropriate to just shed some light on it.
Well, I think it's appropriate for you to ask this. Kevin, do you want to address that, or?
Mayor, if I can, I'll touch on it, and then both our city attorney and our assistant city manager, community development director can weigh in. The comments by Mr. Wright do pertain to the urgency ordinance that is before you this evening. Within the urgency ordinance, I think Mr. Wright is speaking to Section 13.05030 regarding the suspension of new connections. What we're seeing is that development interests are seeking will-serv letters from the city. Currently, in order to do that, we would need to look carefully at this, at the urgency ordinance, whether we, whether that development meets the intent of the language and determine whether we, and this again assumes that council takes action tonight to adopt the ordinance, whether the proposed development project does comply with the, with the ordinance and whether we could indeed issue the will-serv letter. I think it's also going to be a function, because we are, we are in the process of developing the strategy for addressing this curtailment order, our response as part of that response, and how, you know, we want to convey that response to, to the State Board. So I think that is an important element, is, and ultimately, the way the ordinance is written, is that any development would have to show that there's no net impact to our water supply as a result of their proposed connection.
Jose, would you like to expand on that based on what's written in the ordinance?
So, yes. And there's a difference between folks that are ready to build now and connect now, and folks that are saying, look, we just need to move forward in order to kind of continue the development, continue the process. The section about, regarding, well, if you're not going to, if you're not going to put in turf now, you're going to do, either pay a fee or do any installation of improvements in order to not have any impact on our water system, that's mainly kind of seen as, okay, I'm ready now, I'm hooking up right now. There is a section, and that's subsection C under 1305030, which does state during the suspension period, applications for water service will be processed only if the applicant has been issued a will-serv letter or acknowledges in writing that such processing shall be at the risk and expense of the applicant, and that if the application is approved in accordance with the city's regulations, such approval shall confer no right upon the applicant or anyone else until the suspension period has expired, or that the applicant, and that the applicant releases the city from all clean and damages arising out of any manner connected to the suspension. Now, again, what that means is development can come forward and say, okay, well, I'm processing, but at my own risk, because if we never get out of a drought, which, knock on, let's find wood, knock on wood, that this is temporary, this is only for the suspension period where folks are trying to hook onto the system now, but any kind of, any permit applications, any processing of permits, you know, we'll work with applicants, but there may be a condition stating currently, we're in a drought, this section applies, and therefore, it's, it doesn't confer any right at this moment, but everything will be processed at folks' own risk. What we're trying to do is, if the drought didn't go away, we can't just be issuing a lot of connections. This comes in more to play when, for example, our wells are failing, and our water supply is down because we have no wells. We experienced that before here in Cloverdale. We didn't have water. We had a pretty much, folks that wanted to move forward, it was at their own risk because we didn't know we were going to have water. Luckily, got the well, everything happened, everything moved, we got water. But that's kind of that period that we're talking about right now.
You could reach out to our staff if you have more questions.
Thank you very much. That was very important. Definitely.
Thank you. So we're closing public comments at this moment. Go ahead.
I was very happy to hear from the public, especially Nina, and she brought up some very good points. And I just kind of wanted to reiterate that when we're talking about the domestic use, that's the 76% of the pie, that's what the board is really interested in seeing. It's not going to be applying to our commercial businesses and our industries, but that's where, you know, Nina and Savannah and the Chamber Board are so important to us, because I think that they do such a great job of outreach into our businesses and hopefully, you know, getting the commercial resources out to them, especially, you know, the restaurants right now. Getting those water-saving and energy-saving technology, getting that information in their hands via the Chamber will help us make our case, I would, I hope, is that, you know, not only are we, you know, not only are our city residents, you know, responding, is, again, during the last drought, citizens of Cloverdale lowered their per capita water use more than any other city in Sonoma County. I mean, they just, when we asked, they answered, and they came through. So I know that our residents are ready to do this, but I also know our businesses are, but we just need to get the technical assistance through the Chamber and through the Sonoma County Economic Development Board so that they can, you know, invest in the technology so that they can be as efficient as possible. And then we've got an even stronger case to make with the State Board. So I just really looking forward, I look forward to partnering with the Chamber and helping us get that message out for that, for that 24% of the water pie that we definitely need to start, start working on.
Are you leaving on this? Do you have a comment?
Well, my only comment is, there's a lot of people in our community that are very concerned about this, obviously, as well as I am. And I realize, and I agree with Councilmember Bagby, that a lot of people have stepped up and they've done the right thing. But as one of our speakers, Jeannie Cox mentioned, I mean, people have really cut back over the years, and this is an additional cut, which makes it very hard and very difficult. And, you know, we talk about public health and safety, and that means people need to be able to wash their hands, they need to be able to take an occasional shower, they need to wash their clothes. And it's getting to the point where I'm hearing from people in the community, they're concerned. And maybe, maybe the concern is misfed, and that's what we need to be telling them if that's the case. Or are we saying, you don't take a shower but once a week? And I don't think that's what we're saying, yet. But that's the concern people are having, rightly so. So, I mean, it sounds, on paper, it sounds good to cut. Realistically, it's difficult, as you have guests come to your home, you have different things going on in your life, and it's a change of life, and that's, that's difficult for a lot of people. So I want, I want to just make sure, we try to reduce the impact as much as possible to families, recognizing they're going to do everything in their power to reduce their use of the water, recognizing the drought.
Yes. We definitely want everybody to be understanding and be aware that we need to cut, because otherwise, the consequences are even greater. I mean, the fees and the penalties that the city would have to pay will make a greater impact on our resources. And we need to make sure that we avoid those penalties as a city. Would you like to comment on that, David or Susie?
Mayor, I just, again, want to kind of focus in on the actions that staff's requesting council to consider tonight. At first, we're asking council to take action on the urgency ordinance. And the key there is to align the municipal code with the urban water management plan by putting in place the six, the six stages. And that's really making sure that we are consistent with the plan that council adopted, but also the water code. The following action, well, in that regard, our city attorney did provide, you know, some cleanup, there's, you know, some kind of technical cleanup of the ordinance that is necessary. It also offered clarification that if on the water use reduction that pertains to each of those stages is slightly different than as it appears, meaning, again, the stage four isn't 30 to 40, it's really 35%. And likewise, stage five is really a 45%. So the other action we're asking council to take tonight is to adopt a updated resolution that would set a new water emergency stage. The recommendation provided for in the staff report was based on, you know, trying to hit a 40% reduction standard, and that's what we highlighted in the table. Probably the most clearest way to do that would be to set it at a stage five. But clearly, we understand that that has significant impacts in terms of irrigation, in terms of the water rate search urgency. So the other alternative, I think, for council is to look at a stage four, and that would set the mandated water use reduction to 35%. And just for that in context, we've asked our residents in our community to achieve a 25% reduction, so what we're looking at is about another 10% on top of that. We think that's achievable and realistic, especially with additional efforts to educate the community, to, you know, reflect on, you know, specific measures that residents can take, what businesses can do to help, to help us meet that target. And also, that does provide for, you know, some irrigation. Whereas the stage five is a more significant leap from where we are today, but, you know, council chooses to take kind of a more aggressive stance that would, you know, recognizing, we don't do this overnight, it's, you know, since council took action back in April, you know, it's taken us about three months to get to that 20, you know, to get that target. Just, you know, residents just don't change quickly, and that's understandable. It takes time to kind of implement what practices you're going to use to start meeting those reduction targets. So, again, the two actions tonight is adopt the urgency ordinance, we certainly recommend you do that, and then adopt the updated resolution, setting forth the stage of the water shortage emergency that you think is appropriate, based on the discussion we've had this evening. If you do opt for the stage four versus stage five, I just want to acknowledge that, you know, it may be necessary for us to come back at some point and revisit that, just to, just to kind of leave that, that door open, that window, that if we may, we may need to come back, and it's going to be dependent, again, on how successful we are in making and building our case with the petition to the State Board. Obviously, we want to do our part to, you know, address the drought and also avoid the potential for fines, so, you know, show, we're trying to do our part. Again, that's, you know, something for council to reflect on. And, you know, with that, I'll kind of leave it at that. But those are the two actions. I just want to kind of bring it back to council. We do recommend you adopt the ordinance, and then ultimately, you come to consensus on which, which emergency water reduction, you know, shortage stage that you want to set for the community.
So, we're voting on it together? Are you, anybody proposing or independent?
Mayor, if I may, it'll be a separate vote. The ordinance has its own voting requirements, and that's a four because it's an emergency. And prior to consideration, can I just, for the record, go through the minor technical edits on it? There were just a, just a couple. We talked about the sections, specifically Section 1305070, from the title, deleting the 10 to 20%, because that's misleading, because that's talking about your water supply. Section 1305080, again, in the title, the 20 to 30%. 1305090, there's a 30 to 40% reference in the title. 1305100, there's the 40 to 50% in the title. And then the 1305110, there's the greater than 50 in the title. And that was just confusing, because what that's talking about is the shortage in your, in your available water supply. There were, that was one of the changes. Another change, just to strengthen, as far as the purpose of the, of the ordinance and the suspension of new connections, there is a section, Section 1305030, and that is talking about the purpose of that section that's within Section B, subsection B of that section. It states, "The purpose of the subsection is to allow new connections of property that will not increase the use of water in the city in a manner that exacerbates existing drought conditions, just adding or water supply conditions." Because it's, this may be triggered because of your wells, for example, if it's not a drought, that's really a water supply issue. The last changes, just a quick edit, in one of the sections, Section 1305150, it still references finance manager in subsection A and A3. And in that section, wanted to just update that to finance director, given the change of position. And those were the, those were the minor changes.
So, Madam Mayor, I'd like to introduce your urgency ordinance as amended of the City of Cloverdale, amending Chapter 13.05, Conservation of Water Supply of the Cloverdale Municipal Code as required by California Water Code 10632, and for consistency with the City of Cloverdale's 2020 Urban Water Management Plan.
Okay. Thank you.
And that for the record, Mayor, that is for adoption.
For adoption.
That's an urgency ordinance requiring four... urgency ordinance, requiring four votes.
Councilmember Paula.
Aye.
Councilmember Walter.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lamb.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
And Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Okay, next one.
So now, Mayor, now it's the resolution. And the resolution, I don't know if the council still needs to discuss what stage, percentage, et cetera. I think the, the discussion of what, what stage the council would like to implement is, is for discussion now, more to adopting the resolution. The resolution itself, the draft resolution, does have blanks in it right now, blanks for the stage, and also the, the percentage.
Any discussion before? Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll start off. First of all, I feel it's premature to go to stage five until we at least give it an opportunity. We have a lot of things moving forward, working with the state board. Our attorneys have already walked through what they're going to be, trying to make a case, and hopefully, it will be successful. I think I have no problems with this coming back in a month, or two, or three, whatever it takes, to revisit it. But I think we should try to set the standard at something that's less shocking, and hopefully, that's going to move forward. Right now, people are not happy. I understand it. We're not happy. We're not doing this by choice. It's because there's a critical drought. So, we're all under that pressure. So, I'd like to see us at least try to move at a slower pace and give it an opportunity to see how that all fits. So, I could support the stage four at this point, but I cannot support the stage five. Thank you.
I could also second four, stage four. So, I think I'll have everyone else real. We could just stop talking.
Okay. I'm in support of four, too.
Do you want me to question? You want me to?
Before we go to stage four, is that stage four at the 35% that the stage four is presented at?
I'd like to introduce the resolution as amended. I'd have to say it, because the numbers aren't in it. With stage four, 35%.
Perfect. Fill in the blanks.
Resolution of the Council of the City of Cloverdale declaring stage four water shortage emergency, requiring mandatory rationing with a water reduction of 35% from 2020 water use pursuant to chapter 13.05, Conservation of Water Supply of the Cloverdale Municipal Code, and continued the suspension of new or enlarged water system connections due to drought.
I'll second that.
Vice Mayor Lamb.
Aye.
Councilmember Paula.
Aye.
Councilmember Walter.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
And Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one more item, a new business. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor. And I, just for reference, I wanted to report on the, on the audio, that I understand that YouTube is functioning well. It's, it's Zoom, the way that audio is a little off. But we're working on that.
And David, before we go, I just want to thank Palmer and Viviana for your help. And I don't know, hopefully, they could hear me. I think you, you don't have to say for the other item.
You smile because you get to go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night. Thank you.
Okay, proceeding to item nine, under new business, is regards to Sonoma County Civil Grand Jury 2021 final report. The Sonoma County Civil Grand Jury issued a report, and in, in the report, it referenced that each of the cities are required to provide a, a response via the mayor to the, one, one of the specific areas of concern that was addressed within the report. There, there were six, six key areas within the grand jury report. But the one area that required our specific response was in regards to emergency alerts and communication. And there were four specific questions that were necessary to address. And I want to acknowledge the considerable work that our police chief, Jason Ferguson, has done to update, very significant updates to our emergency operation plan, as well as preparation of our evacuation plan. It was almost as if he knew that this was forthcoming when he underwent those efforts. And I think the, the item in the agenda report is a letter response for the mayor's signature that would provide our response, the Cloverdale's response, to the civil grand jury. And I, I'm, frankly, I'm, I'm really proud of the work that the chief has done to, to update our emergency operation plans. And of course, council's action tonight to adopt the annex. I won't go into the specific detail of all the information that we've provided. But what we're, the action we're requesting tonight is that council acknowledge and approve the response, and authorize the mayor to sign the letter, and we will send it to the grand jury.
In that way, I don't have any more follow-up emails. You have not responded, Mayor. So, yeah. So, public comments, and hopefully, we'll get finished soon. Any hands?
No hands on Zoom, Mayor.
Okay. Any discussion from council? I think it's such a thorough, incredible work.
I just wanted to commend the chief and the mayor for putting together a great response. I think that other cities are going to be jealous of everything that we have done and gotten done. And I just wanted to also, you know, call out all of the hard work that the chief has put into our emergency response. We have all learned just a tremendous amount since 2017. And it has, those lessons did not go unheeded. We've really applied them, and I think that they almost, they culminated in the event on Saturday, which was, I think, another model for preparedness, disaster preparedness, that other cities are going to want to copy and roll out. So, I just think that, yeah, chief and the mayor did a great job on the response, and it's really, really good work. So, thank you so much for your hard work on this. I know that, you know, six pages of response probably took, I don't know how many hours per page that was, but it's reflected in the, in the work product. So, well done. And it really, you know, represents our community and all of the work that everyone in this community has put toward improving communications where emergencies and, and preparedness are concerned. So, thank you for all your hard work on us.
Thank you, Chief. And thank you, David. Okay, so, do we vote on this?
I would recommend that council go ahead and, by motion, authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
You guys are quick. Irene?
Counsel, excuse me. Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Paula.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lamb.
Aye.
Councilmember Walter.
Aye.
And Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. There is one issue here, subcommittee items, cooling center policy. That has to be discussed in a future meeting. And this weekend, we have three days of 100-plus. So, that is a concern that I do have, and I would like some feedback, and perhaps some direction to David on that. Is anybody concerned about this cooling center situation that we, we are experiencing our second heat wave? And it's going to be, unfortunately, happens on weekends, so it ruins my weekend. So, David?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, by, by way of background, staff prepared a, a draft cooling center policy that was reviewed by the Finance Administration Police Subcommittee. One of the key aspects of the, the policy that remains is to, you know, identify the specific facilities that would be utilized for purposes of a cooling center. And I think that was kind of a key next step for staff, was to coordinate with the facility operators to, you know, develop and secure those facilities for potential uses cooling centers. And it's also, you know, part of our emergency operation planning effort to further coordinate with the Citrus Fair on a, on a memorandum of understanding to have them be formal, formally our current shelter branch of our EOC. And so that when, when a local emergency is declared, that the Citrus Fair would be available and could serve, particularly if there was a declared heat emergency, as that cooling center. So, that's an area that we are, we're still trying to work on, is to formalize those facilities. But otherwise, the draft policy provides some guidelines that, again, tie back to the, what we would call the operational area, that is part of the new structure that Sonoma County has developed to address, you know, local emergencies. And so, we've set in place the four, kind of four stages, is, you know, from, from heat advisory to, you know, extreme heat conditions. Some other elements that relate to that include a decision by council to consider formalizing an emergency budget for, for your emergency operations center that enables, and provides, you know, staff, funding for expenses related to providing emergency services such as a cooling center. Because we know that to, to kind of staff those up, to get the supplies and the things like that, it does require that we have a utilized budget for that purpose. So, it's still a work in progress. And we're going to bring it back to the subcommittee. But we just wanted to report that we, that this, this policy, draft policy was developed, it was in the packet. And, you know, what we didn't address is that we are in the midst of a hot summer. What do we do in the interim? I think that's what Mayor Cruz was referencing, is, you know, we're
Yeah. And for this, for this weekend, we're hoping that people are able to go to the library. And that is still pending. And by tomorrow, we should have some guidelines or advice to the public. Okay. So, subcommittee reports, Finance Administration, I think we did everything that we discussed in the last meeting today. And October 4th is our next meeting. Would you like to give an update on the COVID-19? David?
Happy to, Mayor. We, of course, now City Hall is completely open. And upon opening, we were issued updated health orders from our health officer pertaining to, you know, the, kind of what we're seeing as a resurgence in the Delta variant of COVID that requires, as we all are reflecting here, wearing a mask indoors. But there's also been some developments with regard to both vaccination mandates or testing mandates for our emergency personnel. And that's something that our chief is working with in the Health Department in terms of addressing how we are going to implement the, these new requirements for, for city staff. And we're in coordination with, with our team at Myers-Neville about how we, you know, some of the legal requirements associated with, with implementation of this, this new health order. It's something that is going to have a cost impact to the city in terms of paying for the, for, for those employees that aren't, aren't vaccinated to pay for the, the testing. And so, we're, we're working on solutions to, to try to address that. So, we, we continue our ongoing, you know, COVID response in terms of, you know, again, these health orders continue to be updated and revised. And we, the staff, especially our senior management staff, continue to, to, to look to best practices on how we implement and meet the intent of these, these revised and updated health orders.
And hopefully, the numbers will come down, and we don't have to cancel our in-person meetings. Okay, American Rescue Plan funding, that is up in the air at this moment?
Mayor, on that item, the, the direction from the Finance Administration Police Subcommittee was to prepare a matrices of projects, activities, that could be funded with the American Rescue Plan, funding guidelines offered by the Department of Treasury, ultimately bring that back to subcommittee, and then forward it to council for, for consideration, some options and alternatives on, on how to allocate that funding.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby?
Planning and Sustainability meets on August 17th. I believe we met new to the library. And I haven't actually had a chance to review this packet yet, but I know that there is an item under PGV offering $400,000 grant for shelter. And I'm just wondering if that would possibly apply to heat shelters. Because I haven't had a chance to review it yet, City Manager.
I think we didn't qualify because we're not a small city, is that what it is? Well, we'll look into that. But public works?
Madam Mayor, we'll be meeting on September 28th at 2:00 p.m.
Okay. And fire will be October 11th, given that we don't need to before that. Vice Mayor Lamb?
Update on the school. The facility improvements are still on track to be completed. The major projects over the Christmas break, the small project before school starts next week. They are, this week, in the middle of what they call roundup. They have all the kids going to school, getting their photos, getting their books, getting their class schedules, et cetera. So, it's a very busy week for the district. And our next meeting is September 20th at 5:00. And it's scheduled to be in the makeup space at the high school.
And you are on next.
And the homelessness community advisory group. We met yesterday. We had a very good meeting, because there has been really no movement since the July meeting. And so, we started working at different angles, and came up with some solutions on ways to help our homeless population, not just the four or five that we see downtown, but the actual homeless numbers that we were informed of yesterday, finding out that we have approximately 92 people that are considered homeless in Cloverdale. And so, it gave us a whole new population of people that we need to try to get help for. So, it was a good meeting, a very collaborative meeting between all the different groups that we have in town, and with the county, and with some private agencies. And it's nice to see them all coming together to find help for everyone. Our next meeting is scheduled for August 10th. I think it's at 1:00.
September 14th.
I'm sorry.
September 14th at 1:30.
September 14th at 1:30. I knew that was wrong.
And I, I will be at a county ad hoc meeting on Monday in the afternoon. That's a new, because it was canceled yesterday afternoon. So, okay, I submitted my council report in writing. So did Councilmember Bagby, and Councilmember Paula.
Mayor, I apologize. Before we, we go, for one thing that we didn't have in the presentation, just want to bring up just a little comment on the water, going back to that item, just, just so the council doesn't miss this. Under stage four, which is the Under Stage Four, which is what you adopted, you got the 35% reduction, the expectations are, they're not, they're pretty high on the residents. There is a section in the Stage Four, at all times, the water shortage emergency conditions on Stage Four, greater is declared to exist by the City Council, water users not in compliance with sections are declared non-essential, and the following restrictions apply. There is a restriction on residential meters serving single-family detached homes, including accessory dwelling units that are served by the same meter, and that's kind of the per person, it targets 65 gallons. So when we're talking about gallons, it still has that big target. Now, we've talked about just residential versus commercial, industrial, everything roped in, and that was a lower number, so that's still, that's still a good target. I wanted to bring it up, just because we didn't, we missed it, and we were talking about it, just so you understand, and so the public understands, and our materials will say 35% reduction, but the target is the 65 gallons per individual. We have a 35, obviously, percent for when you're talking about your commercial users, still 35 is the goal, but there is that 65 gallon, which gets us very close to that 55, which we're going to be petitioning for more. So that gives you more of an idea of where we're headed. But just wanted to bring that up, so when we prepare the documents that go out, blasted everywhere so everybody knows that number is going to come up, gives it a sense of urgency as well, of course.
Thank you for that clarification, Jose. And Jose, or David, any legislative reports?
Madam Mayor, there are two letters of support in your packet, one for AB14, and likewise for SB14, similar bills, but different. Obviously, AB14 is in the Assembly, and SB4 is in the Senate, different sponsors, but both of these letters were recommended by the League of California Cities in terms of support. Ultimately, they're intended to support broadband services, and as well as advanced services fund for the deaf and disabled telecommunication program. So those are in your packet, and just want to make sure you support those and prepare those for the mayor's signature.
Just a question, David. Since we also have that section on the grand jury report, would it be appropriate to maybe reference that grand jury report in those support letters? Because that's a pretty strong section in the report as well, on rural broadband and broadband in general in Sonoma County.
Great connection, Councilmember Bagby. We certainly can modify the letters of support and reflect the grand jury findings.
Maybe we could put it as an appendix to it, addendum to it?
If you like, Mayor, we can--
Yeah, yeah, I think it would be best if we could have it as an addendum, but make reference to it.
Attach the report, if you like, or the section.
Especially since I believe, you know, our Senator, indecently, remember, got copied on that, just so that they can see that we're referencing that, and that these bills are supported by the ideas of the Sonoma County Grand Jury.
Good luck. David and Jose?
I have no reports, Mayor. Water, water, water. That's pretty much what's obviously top priority.
Yes, yes. Okay, and we talked about current emergency with COVID, and council direction for future agenda items. You guys are always welcome to go and spend time with David on that. Okay? All right, well, nothing else? Meeting is adjourned, let's go home to sleep.